Conference pursuant to one M R S A, section four zero three B two D and section six of the Sanford City Council Rules of Procedure as amended and adopted May third, 2022. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone by dialing one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine using meeting ID eight nine eight three zero seven zero three nine four seven and password eight six one five four seven or via computer at the link provided on the city's website. Members of the public may also submit comments via the City of Sanford website at www.sanfordmain.org under email City Department City Council. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence, please. Roll call. Counselor Termath.
Present.
Counselor Brink.
Present.
Counselor Martel.
Present.
Counselor Hanselman.
Present.
Counselor Stackpole.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Present.
And I'm Anne Marie Mastrochio. I'm the mayor of the City of Sanford, and this evening we're joined by Stephen Buck, the city manager, and Larissa Ricketts, the city manager's executive assistant. Minutes twenty-two dash three five eight dash zero one. Ordered to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting held on Tuesday, July fifth, 2022. Do I have anyone willing to make a motion? Please raise your hand. Counselor Termath.
I make a motion to accept the minutes.
Is there a second? Second by Counselor Martel. Any discussion? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor, that is unanimous vote. Twenty-two dash three five nine dash zero one. Ordered to approve the minutes from the executive session of the city council held on Tuesday, July fifth, 2022. Is there a motion by a show? Somebody raised their hand if they'd like to make a motion. Counselor Brink?
So moved.
Is there a second? Deputy Mayor Hurley.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, by a show of hands, that is a unanimous vote. Mayor's report, city council subcommittee reports. I will begin, and then I think there's probably one other subcommittee report to be made. And I will combine my two reports. So Municipal Operations and the Property Subcommittee met, and Public Works Director Matt Hill presented an update on the fleet management program for Public Works. The order he placed over a year ago for two Ford F-750 plow trucks was canceled by a Rundle Ford six weeks ago. The trucks are not being produced any longer. Looking for replacements, he found a pair of International CV-515 trucks at H.P. Fairfield that he can get in time for the upcoming winter season. The cost is $175,890 each, which is more than the original bid. H.P. Fairfield was already supplying the equipment for the trucks, such as the plow wing and sander, but now they will be supplying the complete vehicle. We were lucky that Fairfield had the trucks we needed. The issue now will be whether we will have the manpower to do the work. The city manager presented a proposal to switch Sanford City employees to a four-day work week in an effort to attract and retain staff. This pilot, as developed by the Human Resources Department, would see City Hall open Monday through Thursday from 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. The current schedule is Monday through Friday, eight to 4:30. If a holiday falls on a Friday or Saturday, it will be observed on a Thursday. The main reason for the switch would be to be competitive in the current job market. Bidaford has already transitioned to a four-day week, and other communities are considering it. Municipal governments cannot compete with the private sector on salary, so we must offer other incentives, such as a four-day work week. There are details to be worked out, and he will have a proposal for the full city council to consider at our first meeting in August. The Fire Station Feasibility Working Group will tour Brunswick's new fire station on Wednesday, August 10th, at 10:30. Please mark your calendars. This tour will be in place of the regular monthly meeting, so if you're looking for that meeting on Zoom, you won't see it because we will be out of town. Sanford's thirteen-to-fifteen-year-old Babe Ruth All-Stars became the Maine State Champions this past weekend with a win over Franklin County. They will be in Keene, New Hampshire on Friday to participate in the New England Regional Babe Ruth Tournament. Our congratulations go out to the players and coaches. And continuing in a baseball theme, I was invited to man the ticket booth at a Maynor's doubleheader. Invited is like kind of not really the word. Arm twisted.
That was.
At a Maynor's doubleheader last Friday, along with former school committee chair Kendra Williams. We had a lot of fun, and while we didn't actually see any baseball, we learned that it takes a lot of dedicated volunteers to make those games happen. And it is not an exaggeration to describe Goodall as the best ballpark in the New England Collegiate Baseball League. There's still time to enjoy some good baseball this week and next. Just check their website for the game schedule. And that's all I have. I think Counselor Hanselman, you have a report?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. Public Safety met on July 11th. Counselor Brink, Counselor Martel and I were in attendance. We received a COVID monitoring report from Ian Howseal. York County continues to be in green in terms of community levels. And again, thanks to Ian Howseal for this. Sanford Sewer District reports are now active for the Mausum Pump Station, which gives us a sense of what's happening in terms of our wastewater. We also, our second agenda item was a review of crosswalk safety, which was an update on ongoing efforts that the city has in place. Unfortunately, as we've all been concerned about our crosswalk painting this spring, we are currently working with our fifth vendor trying to get crosswalk painting done. The crosswalk painting takes special equipment, paint, and training, and is something we have historically done via contracted services. Counselor Martel brought up discussion about looking into investing in the equipment for us to do this ourselves, which City Manager Buck will do. However, City Manager Buck expressed concern that due to staffing issues, even if we had the equipment, getting it done ourselves could still prove challenging, and it may not be cost-effective. Note that we're currently down five positions in Public Works. City Manager has updated, excuse me, has promised us an update as soon as he has more information. A reminder that also in January, the council approved the receipt of a $60,000 heads-up Maine DOT grant, where we will match $15,000 for a total $75,000 investment to be used to review crosswalk safety and also for the purchase and installation of additional signage and striping. This work is in process. In terms of the police force, Police Department update Officer Buckland, who's been assigned as our new traffic officer, and he's not new to Sanford, but he is our new traffic officer. As a reminder, we funded this position in the budget for this year, and he's been very busy since he began on June 20th. He's had 140 traffic stops, which resulted in tickets and 18 summons. Other members of the PD have had almost 90 traffic stops in the same period. So watch your speed out there, Mayor.
Actually, it's Deputy Mayor Hurley that we have to really watch.
These stops are not just for speed, but also for other traffic infractions. City Manager Buck quoting late Counselor Tuttle requested that Officer Buckland look into doing some noise-related traffic stops as well. Overall, Officer Buckland's being responsive to traffic enforcement needs in the community is trying to address areas that have been deemed a concern in the past, and the subcommittee was glad to hear his report, as speed and other traffic concerns have been a longstanding topic at public safety meetings. Chief Anderson also touched upon new hires, and he said that under Sanford's newly adopted Retire/Rehire Program, Officer Matthew Johns has been rehired by the Police Department. So we're excited about that. We do still need to fill seven positions within the PD and are looking at using some diverse advertising vehicles, such as radio and video advertisements, and you might see some of the PD and Smithy's advertisements coming soon, although Chief said he wouldn't be part of those. Recruitment is one of the PD's priorities for this fiscal year and because we are anticipating additional retirements. So if you know of anybody looking for a great job with the Police Department, let Chief Anderson know. We did have a brief discussion also from Chief Anderson on the department realignment. He wanted to give us a heads-up that the Police Department is looking into restructuring the command structure of the Police Department to better fit the PD and the community's needs and to ensure that we can sustain new programs that we've implemented and deemed important in the last couple of years, such as the mental health unit, the new traffic officer, the elderly liaison, and more. He will be bringing forward this proposed new structure to the full council in the near future. City Manager Buck noted that this realignment may include decreasing sworn officers and using more civilian positions as appropriate. The last agenda item was the Police Department Vehicle Fleet Review in light of increased numbers of staff and positions recently. D.C. Small presented information about this, and our current fleet, he noted, is in relatively good shape and has lower-than-typical mileage. We currently have 10 SUVs and one pickup for a total of 11 patrol vehicles. We also have five lease support vehicles that include three Kia SUVs and two sedans. These leases are coming to an end in a few months, so we'll have to decide what are next steps with these vehicles. As we have seen in other departments, it may make sense to buy these leases out, but we'll be looking into this further. Recently, the chief made the decision to transfer what had been Chief Conley's vehicle that he also had been sharing with Deputy Chief Small to the mental health unit for their use, leaving both the chief and the D.C. Small without department vehicles. And you'll see D.C. Small walking quite a bit, but he swears that's not because of the vehicle. The plan in the current fiscal year budget has been to trade in two of our patrol vehicles for new vehicles for the fleet. We're now going to review the fiscal impact of not trading these vehicles in, but rather converting two patrol vehicles to support vehicles instead. Chief and D.C. would then be able to use those as new support vehicles, and we purchased new patrol vehicles without trade-ins. So we'll get bids on doing, purchasing the new patrol vehicles with and without trade-ins, so we can see the fiscal impact at the subcommittee level before it comes back to the full council. Finally, at the end of the meeting, I expressed a brief concern about vehicles parking in our school street parking lot and if those vehicles were causing any nuisance to the nearby businesses. Officer Gordon, who was at the meeting, shared that one of the vehicles had recently been removed and that another will be removed soon as the owner is not currently able to move it. Excuse me. As a follow-up to this conversation at Public Safety, I did request some updated data from our mental health unit and Detective Adams. Detective Adams shared that we currently have eighteen to twenty confirmed community members that are unhoused and living outside. There are another roughly twenty community members living in their vehicles and a potential fifty that she is aware of that are considered unstable or have unstable housing, meaning they're couch surfing. There are, of the people living outside, Detective Adams confirmed they are almost all Sanford natives or people that have been in our community for a very long time. Sorry. Of note, Detective Adams has made contact with many of these people and repeatedly offered services and options, and we discussed that we would like to make a formal request at some point for an agenda item to have the mental health unit report out to the full council. Whew, thank you.
That was a great report. Thank you, Counsel Hanselman, and I will echo that request at the end there. I think that there's questions out in the community about what we're doing for the homeless population or the unhoused population or the soon-to-be-unhoused population. So I think that that would be an appropriate agenda item that we devote enough time to it, so everyone can ask the questions that we need to have and make sure that the community knows what we're doing. So, thanks, Steve. Thank you. Okay. City managers' report. You're on, Steve.
Right. I'm going to try to be brief because it's a lot of items here this evening. Sanford Sewers District recently provided us an update. The update is due to Maine State Legislature passing LD 1911, the Sewers District will be faced with a significant increase in expenses starting in 2023 associated with new sludge disposal laws and regulations. The new law mandates that all biosolids be disposed of in state-approved landfill as a way to contain the PFAS substances, or widely known as the forever chemicals. Unfortunately, the landfills that are permitted to take this waste are located some distance from our community and therefore transportation, as well as the tipping fees will be part of that increased expense. Over the years, the sewer district has utilized many alternative ways of disposing of sludge that reduces the cost to the ratepayers, the latest of which was to create compost for landfilling. So they're currently seeking the landfill that offers the district the best available pricing for tipping fees. However, the significant increase in cost brought on by this new law will require the district to raise their rates. So if there's any questions, the superintendent said to reach out to his office at three two four five three one three. Fleet Management providing confirmation that as was described under the earlier report that we have ordered and now anticipate the receipt of the two International CV-515s with plow wing and sanders, and those will be here in time for snow removal this season. They are replacing the two F-750s that Ford has now indicated that they pulled those from our prior bid and said they're simply not going to produce those at all. Howard, so the units coming to us from Howard P. Fairfield will be available for service by the snowfall season. Absent the ability to implement through the fleet management program and the capital program, the city would have not been able to obtain these trucks timely for this season. The units that we were noticed just two weeks ago as being available are now all completely sold out. So the policy served the city and served the city well. Police Department is also working on the analysis for the purchase of the new vehicles versus the lease of the five administrative vehicles, as well as potentially keeping two of our current fleet in the fleet for low-mileage vehicles for realignment of the department. Crosswalks was brought up, and the hand striping, reviewed this with both, this was reviewed at the Public Safety Committee meeting. Cities continue difficulty in obtaining a vendor from a list of five, as was indicated, to timely perform the annual painting of the crosswalks, street directional signage, and parking lot striping. Discussed this with both the Public Works Director as well as our airport manager and recognized that the airport currently does that type of work for the runways each year. Their equipment is aged and is not of the appropriate application that it should be. So we find that there's an opportunity there to look at for a subsequent year, for next year, to be able to take cost savings from the contracted work that we currently have. It's currently in excess of $80,000 per year that we spend for that type of handwork and striping. Transfer that over to buying an appropriate piece of equipment, for example, the painting equipment that has the appropriate glass bead insertion as opposed to the simple drop unit that we have currently. Upgrade our equipment and utilize in-house staff to do that as night work, pay the overtime, and come out of it better ahead as far as cost. And not only that, have control on the timely application of those important elements that we currently are losing because the vendors simply don't have the staff to do it. Also under Public Works, the Westside Village, the contractor sergeant for the job recently pulled a lot of that staff in order to go down and timely complete taxiway C at the airport. That airport work is nearing completion, and that staff will be returning to the Westside Village project. It's still anticipated it will not be completed until the October deadline that was, that is currently in their contract. The final pavement, retaining the wall work, sidewalks and such, the elements that they're working on now, these are the time-consuming and slow elements to complete the project. Also under Public Works, Goral Palmer is completing the design work for the cost-share development of a park-and-ride adjacent to the Cumberland Farms, the former Emerson School site off in Emery Street. The design will be used for either the MDOT cost share or as an element within the pending application for the $35 million raise grant. And the raise grant stemmed from the Joint Land Use Study, which was the element that addressed the significant need as far as housing and transportation issues around the workforce for the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard, Hussey Seating, and others, for which Sanford has the highest propensity of population working in those industries here, and thus the need to create a park-and-ride to assist with the van pools that are currently operating, as well as bring forward additional efficiencies. And part of that is for the York County Community Action Corporation to implement further ride shares and microtransit elements, also using this new facility. Administration has also worked, has been working with Public Works. We're just starting into this process. There's a new competitive category called the Safe Streets for All, which is the SS4A grant coming through the, from the Federal Transportation Authority. This is part of the federal infrastructure bills. We are gearing ourselves up for and looking for technical assistance to apply for a $200,000 planning grant, which is the first step of this process. If we are successful in applying for the $200,000 planning grant, that, those funds will then be utilized to create an engineered analysis of all traffic infrastructure, to include bike, ped, motor vehicles, our intersections, our streetlights and such under that, and for any identified deficiency that we have anywhere in that public transportation infrastructure, we can then use that to apply for competitively for the $1 billion per year that the federal government is putting out there for each of the next five years. Those dollars would come to us, again, on a competitive basis at an 80/20% cost share. We feel that our city will be very competitive on that once the engineered study is done. A lot of that work was done as part of the raise grant, so we can cost-effectively get that prepared and get that out there. We also believe that a lot of communities across the nation will not apply for this because they won't have the technical ability to administer the 80/20 share absent the Maine Department of Transportation. So we have the ability to do the locally administered projects under that cost-share arrangement, and so we intend to bring that forward to the city council as soon as we develop the ability to apply. Also, Public Works has implemented the streetlight maintenance contract as approved by the council with Affinity Lighting, so our LED streetlights are now under a maintenance contract for which we have a number of tickets outstanding that will be addressed in the very near future. Also in the Planning Department, a couple of quick points. The Tiff District for the Nassau Dorm redevelopment has near acceptance with Maine to ECD. There's a couple of final tweaks and amendments that are being made, but we're nearing getting a lot of approval for that. Also in the Nassau Dorms, the Contract Zone work that has been put before the council in a couple of executive sessions, that has been drafted with the compliance of the developer. Planning Department has developed that. It's over to the legal council for review now, and we anticipate bringing that by the second meeting in August forward for a public hearing and acceptance by the city council. Also, the Central Park tax increment financing, as well as the extraction of that small acreage out of the central downtown, tax increment financing is also nearing completion with DECD. The last element that I have in here is compliments to Sanford's staff. I just wanted to, this is the letter that came in. It came from a company called Kona Ice, and this was relevant to the July 4th events. This was addressed to the mayor. It said they wanted to relay their absolute appreciation for our city departments we have the privilege of working with to get our business up and running, as well as a phenomenal Fourth of July celebration. Kona Ice is a national company with 1,500 trucks and pieces of equipment across the U.S. My late wife fell in love with the company, put a deposit to bring Kona Ice to Maine, and became the first franchise located in Maine. After her passing last year, we continued that process, and we're proud to take delivery of a brand-new Kona Ice truck in business last month. They stated that they had the privilege of working with the city clerk's office, fire marshal's office, code enforcement, to obtain the victor's license for Sanford. They have worked with many across the state for the process, and even though it was a very thorough process, the employees were very professional and outstanding to work with. I met with Michelle Berman at the city clerk's office and another clerk who helped that make the process seem seamless. They applied to be a vendor for the Fourth of July fireworks and participated in the parade. The entire staff that they worked with was amazing and very detailed. We've had the honor of working with about 20 towns and cities since we received our truck for various events, and Sanford City employees were some of the finest we have worked with so far. Director Brady Lloyd reached out with many changes and updates. The communications and planning were amazing, by far the most organized that we have worked with so far from municipalities. Stopped by the office to drop off paperwork, and Barbara Buckland was extremely helpful and reached out with info quickly. We arrived at the fireworks early. Mr. Lloyd directed us to where we needed to be, made sure we were all set. Sanford Fire Marshal stopped by and did an inspection, made sure we were okay, and then the next day for the parade. Mr. Lloyd stopped by to inspect everything, made sure we were okay, and I had never met Mr. Lloyd or the fire marshal before and was very impressed with their thoroughness and their professionalism. With all of the negative that often gets relayed, I just wanted to take a minute to thank you, the wonderful city staff, for helping new businesses get the help they needed and making us feel welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. And after all of that, I just want to say that I'm just really hopeful that I'm going to wake up one day and overnight the sidewalks, those crosswalks are going to be painted. So, because honestly, it's been the thing that's bothered me the most, that people, I saw, almost saw an accident occur down by Third Alarm. Seen a couple of those, and even with the lights, you don't see the crosswalk. And if you're driving and there are cars that are parked there, which they are unfortunately, so I appreciate that there, even though it will be done with overtime, that we're going to get it done. So I appreciate that. Thank you. Communications and Presentations, twenty-two dash three four seven dash zero one. Quarterly Report and Presentation from the Director of Sanford Regional Economic Growth Council. And we have our new economic development director who's going to do it.
Well, good evening, and thank you very much. I'm Keith McBride. I'm the Director of your Growth Council. Typically, I know that this is a time set aside for updating economic development activity in the quarter that would have just concluded, but seeing as how I was on board for all of two weeks of that quarter, this would be a very short update indeed. So instead, I wanted to take a couple minutes, and I do intend to be brief, to talk about the manner and the method of these updates as they'll be going forward. I've provided to the council and will provide to the community via our website what we're calling our Economic Development Dashboard. It's essentially a measure of metrics, tracking some of the higher priority initiatives in economic development. And for now, they are a measure of the projects that are in our pipeline, housing development, community growth, small business development, industrial development, the growth of Sanford Net Fiber, and of our communications and marketing strategies. It, at present, is no more than a template. We're trying to fill it in with some baseline data, and I think it fits in with an overall strategy of essentially needing to figure out where we are today, especially coming out of a pandemic, to know if we are ever merged from that or if we're still trying to recover things that were lost from 2019 to present. And what we need to be doing to move forward towards a broader community vision of how economic development should be moving us forward as a community. We need to also internally figure out our values and our vision and our mission for the Growth Council and how it intends to, tends to behave within the vision that the community sets forth. My idea is that once the community has given us a sense of where it sees itself to be within the next five, 10, 20 years, we will know within those visions what types of initiatives, projects, tasks we can implement that we feel will help us get there. And then a document like this, a metrics dashboard, will be a great communication piece to continue to bring back to you and bring to the community to say, here's where we're going, and here are the tools we're using to try and get there, and here's how we're doing. And I expect to bring that to the council to say, this is an interesting piece that we've noticed this quarter. Look how this number has changed. Or we did an initiative in this quarter to try to boost this, and it's worked, or it hasn't worked. The goal being, we have a plan, we work our plan, and we check how well it worked, and then we adjust, and then we go back and plan again, and we continue that process over and over and over until we get it right. And ultimately, I believe that that is the most effective way to execute an economic development program. And I know from speaking with members of my Board of Directors at the Growth Council, this is a method that they favor. So I think especially over the next, I'll say, a couple of years, I would expect to be coming to you more with what we see as our role in that and what our mission is as an organization and how that fits into some broader community visions that are being presented for how the community expects it wants to grow. What's going to change? What do we want to preserve? What do we see for ourselves and what's an ideal vision for Sanford going forward? So I welcome any and all questions. We are going to really ramp up our community engagement once we're ready to start taking in some of that feedback about vision. And I think that very much starts with the members of the council as representatives of the community, but we expect to go much deeper into the community than that, reaching out to members of the business community, community organizations, et cetera. So I guess that's just a long way of saying we are looking for engagement and we're looking for response. Glad to take any questions from members of the council now about anything, really, and anybody else who would like to reach out. I mean, contact information for myself or our small business advocate, Mary Hastings, is available on our website. We do welcome members of the community to reach out with any questions about, or any ideas about where they feel that the Growth Council should be putting its efforts at this time. I'm very impressionable because I'm very new, so it's a good time to do that, I would say. But if there's anything I can address for the council at this time, I'm glad to do so.
Oh, I think we're all set, Keith. I don't think there are any counselors with any questions. Nope. Do you, so in four months, we'd expect that there would be somewhat of an update utilizing that template that you showed us this evening.
Yes. And I'll mention too, I mean, I know that there are certain higher-profile projects that are in the works that the council and the community are going to want to know how they're progressing. And I think we'll see that in many cases, it'll fit right within some of those broader initiatives we have, whether it be small business development or housing development. And I'll also use that opportunity to update the community on how some of those projects are moving forward.
Thank you, Keith. Counsel Hanselman, go ahead.
I just want to share with the public that SanfordGrowth.com is the website, and they have a great Facebook page you can follow as well, which shares great information with the community.
And it will be linked with our new website, right?
I should have mentioned that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Nope. Thank you, Keith. Twenty-two dash three six eight dash zero one. Update on Communications Progress and New Website Status. Jordan Wilson, our Communications Director. And not on Zoom.
I know. This is my first in-person meeting. Okay. So this will be a progress report, I guess, for the last six months, as well as a website update. All right. So we'll start with some of the projects that I have completed so far, starting with the annual report. I worked with the department heads on the 2020-2021 annual Starting with the annual report, I worked with the department heads on the 2020-2021 annual report, which is available downstairs in the clerk's office and on the city's website under the residence section. And then you have to click the Documents Library to find it. Another big project I did was the community survey. This spring, we conducted the city's first in the No Community Info Survey. And I would say it was fairly successful. We had about 410 responses, which will help us create our communication strategy. And I'm looking to conduct a yearly survey as a way to gauge community satisfaction and engagement. Next is the Firefighter Cancer Awareness Month. So January was Firefighter Cancer Awareness Month. And I use this as an opportunity to conduct a mini public education campaign about the cancer risks in the fire sciences. And then this kicked off our hashtag Friday or hashtag Fire Friday campaign, which is the public education campaign for the need for two new fire stations. And then organizational analysis is I tried to meet with all the department heads as well as community partners. And I also tried to attend as many meetings as I was invited to to better understand how the city worked and to better get a grasp on how I could then relay that information to the public. I also joined the Board of Directors for the Chamber of Commerce to better understand the business side of the city as well. So my ongoing projects, some of them have a hard stop and other ones are going to be continuous projects that don't really ever end. The big one I'm focusing on right now is our rebranding and new website strategy. So a plan to explain our new logo, as well as announce and explain our new website. I'm trying to find a way to, I guess, build hype and excitement for it, as well as make it as seamless for our residents and employees as possible because it is going to be somewhat of a shift to going from something so new. But social media communications is an ongoing project. Our survey results told us that residents want more Facebook communications, and it has proved to be a fairly effective communications tool. I do my best to post at least once a day and try to share some diverse content. We shared a wide array of our own content, such as Who Is Your dot-dot-dot, which is a new series I'm starting that introduces the public to different department heads right now to kind of understand what they, who they are and what they're doing for our community, as well as a weekend schedule. So for the last couple of weekends this summer, I've tried to scan some events that we have going on to put on a weekend schedule because we often hear people saying, oh, there's nothing to do in town. But I've noticed that our weekends are fairly packed. As well as content from our community partners, so I've recently shared the Springville Farm Walk this week or a congratulations post for the Babe Ruth team. And our next slide will provide some more insight into the social media channels. Public education is another ongoing project or campaign to educate our residents of existing or upcoming services, programs, events, or ballot items. For example, Pay As You Throw, the Need For New Fire Station, the November Brownsfield Referendum, and the Pending Charter Amendments. And Public Relations is another ongoing project. I think PR is extremely important, and getting media coverage for the great things that are going on in our town is a great way to help us change some of the ideas that people inside our community and outside of our community have of Sanford. And I have another slide that kind of breaks down some of the PR efforts that we've done and the media coverage we receive so far. And going forward, my goal is to have media coverage for the city, like an article or a segment at least once a month. All right, so I pulled these numbers last Monday. They might have changed slightly, but this should be a pretty accurate assessment of how our social media sites are doing. Facebook is where I've spent most of my social media attention. Since I started in November, we've had a page reach of 77,070. And this is a number of individual pages or profiles that have visited the city's Facebook page. 10,173 individual profiles. Oh, wait, no, page reaches amount of pages we've reached 10,000, 10,700 or 10,173 are the amount of people that have visited the city's page. And then from that, we've had 555 new Facebook followers. And that is actually an increase of 25%. For the Instagram, it's not really a place that I see us spending a lot of time to educate the public. I think it's more of a place that people go for aesthetic or the way of life in Sanford. And I think it's just more for the pretty pictures. And we can attach educational campaign or educational captions to these pictures, but I haven't spent too much time on that. Once we have images from our aerial photography and videography sessions, then we'll spend more time on Instagram. That being said, our Instagram has reached 870 different people, and 625 of those have visited our website for a follower or for an increase in followers of 160. And then LinkedIn has kind of been a place where I've spent some attention and not a ton. But as we go forward with our PR campaigns, the hope is that we'll have more business or development centric articles to share on our LinkedIn. But that being said, our LinkedIn has had 350 page views, 200 unique visitors, and 20 new followers. All right, so this page breaks down the media coverage that I can be tied to. In total, we have 11 articles, two about the airport, four about renaming Sheerburn Street to Tanguay Street, one about the Raze Grant, and four about the Mental Health Unit. The Leon Tanguay story was covered by the Boston Chronicle, and the Mental Health Unit story was featured on NewsCenter6. So as I've said, I'm making a greater public relations effort. This list outlines some of the PR opportunities that I see for the city of Sanford. So our Green Initiatives news release would highlight the numerous initiatives the city of Sanford has undertaken to create a more sustainable community. For example, the Airport Solar Project, the expansion of Sanford Net Fiber, and the conversion to LED lights. Our fire station releases would be articles focusing on the need for two new fire stations, which will play a part in the greater public education campaign for the fire stations. And these releases will emphasize that our stations are noncompliant and that they cannot be further renovated. The Sanford School Department releases would focus on the department's efforts to renovate every classroom for students in the district. And I think that's something that we're doing, and we should be proud of it and be bragging about it. Speaking of the schools, I've also met with the school district last week to discuss their communications position. And then the Brownsfield Public Relations Section would be linked to the public education of the Brownsfield. I'm working with Beth and planning to put together news releases highlighting the hard work and success of our previous Brownfield projects, such as the Sanford Mill, the CGA site, Stuntin' Mill, and then we will do an education one about the International Woolen Mill. And then these are some upcoming projects in the pipeline. For the website, I will provide a more in-depth website update on the next page. But implementation of our new site is in the distance, and once a site has been turned over to us, we'll have a better idea of how we can then implement it with our employees and the public. Along with the new website, we'll be doing a new city e-newsletter. And as with the website, once the website's in our hands, the e-newsletter will be easier to implement. But we've been brainstorming some ideas for content to feature in the e-newsletter. Our communication strategy has been on the radar for a while, and it was one of the main reasons I did the In The No Community Survey. And the drafting of the strategy will really start after the council goal session in August, so we can connect the strategy to the council goals. And lastly, opportunities for direct engagement. The survey highlighted that our residents would like more face-to-face interactions with the city. So I'm trying to create opportunities for these connections to happen. All right, and so for a website update, it's closer than ever. Revise, our website vendor has entered the final stage of quality assurance last Tuesday. So in about two weeks, the website, Revise will reach out to me to set up training for city employees. And after everyone has been adequately trained, and we will then have the site turned over to us. And from there, we will edit the site, so I'll go through it, and then we'll send it to all the department heads to make sure they approve what is going in their site or their subsection. And then I'll also be doing some educational campaigns, some site tours, like a screen tour, so that our residents can fully understand how to work the site when it's live. And we'll also be doing a campaign to kind of explain the new logo and everything that went into that. So my best guess is probably early September, when we should all be set to go. And then on July 1st and July 19th, Johnny Moher, who works with Canelyco, came to Sanford to conduct two days of video and photo shoots around the city for the new website, as well as upcoming marketing and promotional materials. Any questions?
Yeah, I, do any councillors have any questions for Jordan? Counselor Turmatt?
Jordan, thank you very much for your presentation. It was excellent. Very encouraged by this new website. And, you know, and the opportunity that residents have to be able to go on their search, you know, with ease, grab information. So, so I'm, I'm very excited for the ribbon cutting ceremony, so to speak, on this.
Me too, me too. That's definitely something I get all the time. When's a new website coming? When's a new website coming? When's a new website coming? All right, thank you.
Wait one sec. And that was not a question, but that's okay. Does anybody else have a comment or a question? No? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Jordan. Okay, next item on the agenda is public participation for items that are not on the agenda. I didn't, is there, was there a list, Larissa? Did anybody sign up that's in the audience? Thank you. And is there anybody on Zoom that has their hand up? Larissa, I'm going to count on you. Nope? Okay, then I'm going to assume that there is no one. Public hearings, there are none. Consent agenda and hearing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. That is 22 dash 351 dash 01. It is just one license request. Old business, there is none. New business, 22 dash 362 dash 01. Ordered to authorize inclusion of an informational insert with tax bills. Steve, are you going to present on this first?
I can. I can. And Ms. Wilson is here as well as the creator of the product. If Ben can bring that up on the screen for us, please. So we have a quote from our current vendor that produces the city's tax bills that for just under $3,000 for the 9,800 plus tax bills that go out, we can put two color pages, both printed front and back. So four pages worth of information. This will be the first, excuse me. Apologize, my allergies. This will be the first time the city's will have done this type of a tax insert. And the tax insert is really put in there to communicate some of the most prevalent pieces as far as the city's budget for the year is concerned. There's that information, there's year-over-year change in there, and we will then show you, there's information in there on property tax relief, all of the various state and local programs that are available. And then the last and the fourth page is going to be dedicated towards communications. So starting off the the presentation, you have the 2022 Municipal Tax Analysis. Where do your tax dollars go? Ms. Wilson came up with this ability to convey the information. You have the expenditures by category for county tax, municipal, schools, and capital reserves. And then they're expressed as a percentage basis on where your tax dollar goes for expenditures. Next is the conveyance as far as out of that municipal and the school expenditures, where your tax dollar is going as far as those categories are concerned. You can see general government is 30%, public safety is 32%, public works is 13%. All of the important elements are broken down in here. 12% for capital improvements. And then the same breakdown, we tried to keep continuity between the city and the school budget. So the continuity shows the breakdown of where the the tax dollars go as far as expenditures within the school. Instruction is 31%, administration and support is 13%, facilities 10%, debt service 19%. Special education is 16% and career technical education is seven. Next is a breakdown of where the revenues come from. So the non-property tax revenues, the municipal revenue is just under 16.7 million, which is 17% of the overall revenue stream. School revenue coming from the essential programs and services is at $43.7 million, which is 46% of our revenue stream. The use of undesigned fund balance of $850,000 is 1% of the overall revenue stream. And 36% of the of the revenue stream is comes from property taxes at 34 million, 34.6 million. Going to the backside of this first page that we put in there, we thought it was important this year to show the use of COVID money, where those those funds that are coming in. So for the first year implementation under OPER, the city will use 1,465,000. Where is that going? 289,000 is going into new hires. $300,000 is going into affordable housing for the land bank. 585,000 went to disproportionately impacted communities. That's the purchase of the fire department land. You have improvements to outdoor spaces, Carpenter Park at 95,167. Training and tuition for training in both the police department, the dispatch center, as well as the fire department for paramedic training. And then the last amount, $50,000 this year, $200,000 a total of $50,000 in this first year of implementation goes towards the expansion of broadband for businesses. The ESRA funds, again, keeping in continuity, $3.4 million of that is being used this year by the Sanford School Department. And we have a breakdown in here that there's 1.2 million going into the Sanford Middle School, the Sanford Pride School, $322,000. Again, this is to catch the students up for lost educational time during the COVID period. Margaret Chase Smith sees 332,000, Kyle J. Lamb, 593,000. The SRTC, 60, just under 64,000, a high school, 681,000, and district-wide implementation is 266,953. And the last piece of the tax information in here goes to the year-over-year change in the assessment, the valuation and taxation combination from '21 to '22. So this is one of the most important graphs that the council looks at each year as they're working on acceptance of the municipal and the school budget. What it's showing is the yellow bars are showing for $100,000 or less, the 62 residential units, single-family residential units that fall into that assessment category. Our largest category is from 175 to $200,000. This has actually shifted two bars over the last three to four years. It shifted from the 125 to 150 was the largest category. It's now shifted over to the 175 to 200. So this graph is showing the combination of the 2.23% net increase in in net taxation. But it accounts for a 25% increase in in valuation overall that is largely attributed to the pressures that are associated with the changes in the market sales stemming from COVID. People coming out of the large cities, migrating into Maine. Sanford is one of the first cities, is the first city that you hit. When you come in here, it had very affordable housing, and those market pressures are being seen as a 25% year-over-year. Prior to that, it was nearly 25% the year before that. We also made note in here that the single-family homes comprise 68% of our total taxable valuations. So they're bearing the brunt of taxation here in the community. And that the graphs show the combination between the average increase in the home value, coupled with the 2.23% increase in net taxation. So the graph is showing, for example, if your home now falls into 175 to $200,000 category, for which that's the largest category, the average increase across all single-family residences in that valuation range is $131 year-over-year. Okay. So that couples the the tax information that we were trying to convey. Next is where can you get help on your taxes? So these are the primary areas that people can seek property tax relief. There's a main resident homestead property tax exemption that provides a 25% exemption on the first $25,000 worth of value, for which the homeowner gets the full benefit of that because we are assessed at 92% and/or greater, so they get the full benefit of that. If they have not applied, there's an explanation of the program. If they have not applied for the program, they can contact our assessor's office. It's too late for this year, but they could apply for a subsequent year. So the contact number is in there as well as the physical location. The next is the Property Tax Fairness Credit Program. Eligible main taxpayers may receive a portion of the property tax or rent paid during the tax year. There's a further explanation. There's a further explanation of the, of the program and how it, it is entailed. Some people do not take advantage of this because of their income levels. They, they do not apply for, they don't file taxes. So the information is, is put in here as to where to find the program, but also that they can get free assistance through York County Community Action Corporation right here in Sanford. They can, they can make an appointment. There's a, there's information here that's provided. They can make an appointment and they will file their taxes for them at no cost. And I believe they can do that wholly over the phone for many people. So that if, if somebody has not taken advantage of this before, and they qualify, they truly should, and there's assistance to help them do that. There's a property tax deferral for senior citizens. This is currently under Title 36. This is not the latest program that was just passed. The fate of that is yet to be, to be known. But this is a current program whereby you could, you can defer the payment of your property taxes. Essentially, a lien goes on your home. And at the time of sale, so if, if you've passed or you're selling your property and downsizing, then the taxes will be taken, that's a lien between you and the state. And the state will pull the money back at that point in time. And then there's information in here as far as the veterans exemptions. That's another large category for those veterans that may or may not have been taken advantage of, of this. It's, it's a wonderful benefit that, that is due to them. And again, they can apply directly to the Sanford City Assessor's Office. There's also a link that Jordan has put in here as far as these overall tax programs. You can go to this, this, this is the homepage that has a full description and other resources as far as those tax programs are concerned. And then, Jordan, I'll let you speak on the, the last page here as far as communications as, as to what you're trying to relay there.
Okay, so the first section just kind of explains my position and why the city felt it was necessary to create my position. And the main point is that we believe this will give us the opportunity to create a better community dialogue. The next part explains what is being done with the survey that we did in April. And it also lets our residents know that a new communication strategy is underway. I provide this, oh my gosh, the same website update that I gave you to our residents and let them know that they'll be able to sign up for an e-newsletter and email text notifications on the website. And I instruct them to follow the city on Facebook or Instagram for more updates and information on that. And then we felt that this was a good opportunity to talk to the residents about the election in November. And also a good opportunity to start explaining the charter amendments as well as the Brownsfield referendum. And then we did a keep an eye out section just to let our residents know some things that are happening in the future, such as updates on the new website and how to sign up for the new e-newsletter, information about the two new fire stations, information about the Brownsfield bond, future surveys and roadway improvements. And then I applied, or I put the links for the city's social media and website on there as well.
So before this council just discusses this, could I please have a motion via hand if you'd like to make a motion to approve this? Hand. Councilor Martel? Council Mart, thank you. Is there a second, Councilor Hanselman?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. I, I just wanted, there, I have a couple of comments that I'd like to just, before I forget, because I did write these down. The only comments I have on the first three pages are on the second page where you have the disproportionately impacted communities. I would specifically say fire station land there because that means nothing to the average person. So I think that everybody, and, and you might want to say specifically what property we purchased.
There's enough room in there.
I think there's plenty of room. I would, I would take out the disproportionately impacted communities and put in the Springvale Nurseries land for a future fire station, however you want to say it. That's up to you. Now, I don't know how quickly you got the city communication page ready, so I'm just going to say that of all of the pages, that's the one that needs to be proofread. And, because I think there were a number of things that really weren't clear, in particular, the, the paragraph that explains the November 8th election. And the fact that we still don't know if there will be any charter amendments on the ballot, even though, because we could decide not to put anything on there. And that I also think there needs to be a space in here where contact your city council or contact your, your, the mayor and the city council. I think that we are where the buck stops. We're the ones that pass this budget. It, it's, I think we need to be, we need to own this.
So, do you want that over with the tax information? Do you want it in the last communications page?
No, I think under communication. I think the whole point of the communication pages, I, I guess what I'm hoping comes out of this is that somebody will actually look at this and realize, well, gee, if I have a complaint, it might be better to actually complain to somebody who can do something rather than post it on Sanford, on, on social media. That's kind of what I'm hoping. A page that has, between these two pages, I mean, it's too bad, to be honest with you, that they're on back to front. Because I would love to see these be so informational that it's the kind of thing you put up on your refrigerator. So if there's a possibility that, I mean, I know that we don't want to put another page in, but you understand what I'm trying to say is that I find, as someone who, when I get things in the mail, if I don't put it up somewhere, it goes into the pile and then goes, gets thrown away. So I'm just saying that I would love to know that at some point.
Can I just make a comment to what you're saying?
Yep, one second. Yep, just one sec. That's all. So I just wanted to finish what I have to say. That's all. Thank you.
It's to what you're saying.
Counselor, I mean Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, when I look at this, I see like the communications saying someone would not post.
Right.
The new website update, when it happens, it's done. They won't need to post it on their fridge. The elections, when it's done, it won't be, need to post a real page. I mean, making sure that what they might want to post is on the one page.
This page. The one where, where can you get tax help?
So if there's any additional information, that should be the tight one where you can make sure people can post it somewhere if they need to.
And, and in the end, I mean, honestly, I think that as, as the elected body that's in charge of all this, in, in the, in the end, the buck stops with us, that we need to be there somewhere. And that would probably be the page. Okay, anybody else? Questions, cancers? Councilor Hanselman?
Uh, thank you. First, I think this is really exciting and I appreciate the effort that's gone into it. Second, under the property tax fairness credit, I know that QR codes were kind of going out of style, but COVID brought them back. And just with this really long website address to apply, I wonder if we couldn't instead insert a QR code there? Just because it's, I, I would never get that typed correctly. And I am having vision problems, so that would be part of it. But a QR code might make it easier for somebody to get to that website. That would just be a, a suggestion to consider. And then this might be something that Steve has to comment on, but I didn't realize that the property tax stabilization program was at risk. Because that's certainly a big program I would want folks to be aware of with that deadline coming up, December 1, or whatever that deadline is for applying.
Well, okay, so my, my comment is there's no funding behind that.
But, but the program exists at the state level, correct?
Well, there's, there's two, there's two. There's the tax deferral program, that's funded, right? So that's under Title 36. The new, the new one that would just, just passed in the 11th hour of the state legislature that I had to knock on our lobbyist's door at MMA and say, where did this come from? What's this piece of legislation? Big pause there. There's so many questions around that. It was passed in the 11th hour. And if you look at the fiscal statement, there, there's the creation of a position to administer. That's it. There's no funding behind that. So. We're going to be, we're going to be taking applications, but our assessor's office is beside themselves because we don't know what's going to happen once we send those applications in, in January, how that's going to be funded.
My comment would just be that I still understand it to be a property tax relief program. I think it's an issue for us as a municipality, no question. And I have concerns about it as a city council and the impact it has on us. But it's an important piece of relief for our seniors. I feel like it's, I think it's a disservice to admit it, I guess is my official.
May I just add something to that? Because I have spoken with people on the appropriations committee as well as the Speaker of the House and the Majority Leader. And they are kind of scrambling to figure out what they're going to do. There is no means test to this, which is, seems to be the main problem. I don't even think this bill really had a public hearing. So I, I think that what Steve is probably saying is correct. We will probably take applications. It, it goes to the end of December, December 30th. First of December, is that the date?
Yeah.
That will, we will, I think what I've read is they're, they're advising municipalities to figure out a process to take those applications. My guess is that come January, that they will be adjusting that. Does that mean you shouldn't apply? Because all it does is stabilize the amount of, that your tax, if your taxes went up $150 and you qualify for the program because you lived here for 10 years and you were over 65, you know, you have to live in that house. And then every year you would have to apply, that they're supposed to fund, and in the bill it says 100%, but the way that state law is written, they would only have to refund that at 50%, which means we would then be in another place where we would be shifting taxes. So I totally think it's a problem. Once, I'm the one, I found it and sent it to Steve and said, what the heck? Where'd this one come from? And I immediately was talking to my, my co, former colleagues because it really concerned me. Anything that I consider an unfunded mandate, and this is definitely not funded, the only piece of it that is funded is the administrative piece at the state level. So I fully, I fully expect this to change. I agree with you, Councilor Hanselman. We need to be prepared, even if it's just a simple application because it doesn't really seem like there's a whole lot of information right now that they need. With the caveat, when we take it from people, that we don't know what's going to happen. Anyway, that's, that's my understanding and the exploration I've done. I fully expect that we will get more information on it. But the legislature is not back in session until January. So there won't be anything happening.
Is there a way, and, and, senses questions about it? Is there a way to actually just put somewhere in there any other state, any other property tax relief programs, please, that might be available? Please contact, like, so that we leave it kind of open-ended for other things that are passed later, that this is the office you call? So that we don't, I, I, I think it's a little scary to put that plan out there when there's questions about how it's going to work, especially if they put a means test on it. But if we put that, any, if you hear about anything else, this is going to be the office you call. Is that possible? And which office would you think could handle that?
Well, the, the assessor's office will be taking these, these applications, for which there's no form or format for as of yet. When you go to the state revenues website, it's not referenced or mentioned there at all. It's not part of their, you know, their, their bailiwick of, of options that, that people can access. So it's just, it's, it's concerning that you, you, you're going to put that. We know the law passed, right? So you put that information out there, I see that you're making a promise that here's the program. And when it comes unraveled, I just, I just want little, little to nothing to do with that unraveling. So in, in, in my experience, typically, right? State constitution says they must, for an unfunded mandate, they must refund us 50% to do the 100. They must fund us the, the 50% aspect of that, or use those three words, notwithstanding. Right? And, and pay us nothing. And I've seen that happen over the years. It's nasty.
I, I might, I fully expect this will not, it'll exist for one month, and then it will be something else. That's my expectation, that it will not exist the way it does right now because it's not doable. Councilor Hanselman?
I like Deputy Mayor Hurley's suggestion that we just offer up that there may be other, just, you know, again, we're listing relief. This is a law that exists at the moment that we're going to print. I hate to, I, I guess I like the idea of just leaving an open window, that there may be other relief available and, and to check back whether.
Like a one-liner.
Yeah.
Even, yeah.
It would just make me feel better.
I absolutely agree with that. And I would just like to also, I think it's really critical for the property tax, it sounds like it's a property tax relief, but it's property tax and rent. So people who have high rents, and that is a fact of life now. So if, and it's in relation to their income, they will get significant money back, but they need to file their taxes. So if there's any way that we can push, when people come in and say, oh, you know, I'm having trouble, we need to just push them all to that place where they can get their taxes done for free. And they can do it, I think it's three years past. They can file taxes for, in the past, and get that money back. And it will help them pay their, their other bills. So I just think that we can do a lot as councilors, and I like the officials to make sure that that happens. Councilor Martel?
Yeah, I just had a quick question around the, the tax filing assistance. I assume that they would be up to date on any other programs that may be available in the future?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand your question. What?
So, you know, right now, we're kind of talking about this fairness credit may change or morph into something else or may go.
No, not, not the, the one that isn't on here. It's one that's for over 65-year-olds who've been in their houses. It's not on here because it's, it's brand new. And that's the one we're talking about.
Okay, but this, this filing assistance place would be, would likely have information around that, right?
If, if that ends up being something that is in effect in next March, when people are filing their taxes, I can assure you that they will know about it, but at that point, you won't be able to file. In other words, so the way that the law is written, you have to file by December 1st of this year.
I got you.
For the next, to, to, to get that in next year's taxes. I mean, it's, it's a, I think it's going to be like a year and a, it's, it's a very, I'm going to tell you.
So the catch.
It looks like a simple bill. I read the bill. Once I read it, I know this is not a simple thing. Somebody wrote it. It went through, it was nuts. Somebody was not watching. And that means a whole lot of people weren't watching.
It's a little Polesky.
Because I think it went under the hammer. So you can just share the blame for all of them. And, and I think that, that's why I'm saying that I don't think it will stay the way that it is. It's not as simple. But I can guarantee that if you go to get your tax help from York County Community Action, free tax, they will have the most up-to-date information available for everybody. They are what I consider the group that I send everybody that calls me, and they do it by, on, on the phone.
So I think it would make sense to maybe add in another line that other programs may be available.
May come to pass, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions about this?
Yep, so, so point of clarification. So which page do you want the council contact information? And what contact information do you want?
I just want simple, like our, you can, if you want to put the, it's the one where it says, where can you get tax help? Maybe at the bottom where he says for, you can, I just think if there's a place, because this might be the one, I think the Deputy Mayor is correct. This is the one that would have all the help on it. That's the one that, that you, somebody would save. And if there's a place where you can just tuck in, I mean.
To reach your city council.
To reach your city councilors. Here's the, here's, here's the email. If they go on our website, I mean, I'm hoping that it's easier to find us on the new website.
It will be. It will be, don't worry.
I mean, honestly, I think that it will help everybody if they can reach us. I know you're, that, you know, it's funny because when I'm watching it on here, I can actually see your face because of the way the camera is. But this is, we need to get you, isn't there a stool there?
A little pedestal.
There actually used to be a stool there. I'm serious. We had people that used to have to stand on it. Anyway, that's fine. So I, and can you do me a favor? I don't really care so much about the other pages, but if you, if it helps, can you run it by us again before, it's not going to go in until when taxes go out in August? Or do they go out August 15?
It was out the first week in August. I'd like, I'd like to get that to the printer as soon as possible. They're going to print these pages ahead of time, get them ready.
I just have to say that I'm not real happy with this last page in the way that it's written. So maybe Larissa, I would trust Larissa.
Maybe you could sit with Larissa and.
Yeah, I just am, it just isn't clear, and there were some words that were missing and stuff. And we're going to send something out, I just wanted to be.
Sounds like basic editing.
Pretty basic.
We've discussed the major issues.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Termath has a question.
Yeah, I just have a quick question. So are we prepared to approve pending changes on this, Madam Mayor?
Yeah, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, any more discussion? Okay, I have a motion, a second, any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, by a show of hands, that is a unanimous vote. Thank you. Thanks, Steve. Twenty-two dash three-three-five dash zero-one, order to authorize the city to expend in addition to the amounts otherwise raised and appropriated under this budget for the city purposes, any unanticipated unbudgeted surplus gifts, grants, bequests, devises, devices, or revenues from any other source. Do you have a motion to approve, Deputy Mayor Hurley?
I have a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Counselor Brink?
Second.
A motion and a second. Steve, do you just wanna just, I mean, this is a pretty standard boilerplate.
Annual housekeeping, it is in the city charter currently. Uh, it is provided in, in state law under Title Thirty-A, uh, but nonetheless, our prior legal counsel and our finance director has always brought this forward under that recommendation that the, the city council should pass this, uh, given the blanket authority, even though you know that all of those elements are coming before you, uh, before they're accepted and/or expended, so.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions by the council? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor, that is a unanimous vote. Twenty-two dash three-three-six dash zero-one, order to see what percentage of unencumbered appropriations the city council will vote to permit the city manager to transfer with city council approval from one account to another within the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget according to Charter Section Six Thirteen. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
I'll make a motion to recommend a number not to exceed two percent, which is six-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-three dollars.
Correct. And do I have a second? Counselor Hanselman?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hanselman. So discussion by the council?
I'm just gonna make a comment. It's been two percent since we were writing the charter before two thousand and two, so it's, it's, it seems to be a workable number, so you don't, they don't seem to have to, um, transfer any more than that to make adjustments throughout the year.
And considering some of the difficult times we've had, I think that that's a sign of good budgeting.
It is. We, we actually look at history, when we did the two thousand and four charter in two thousand and two, we looked at the history of how much the, um, city, or the town meeting had approved after the fact. They always approved it after the, the fact, and it had always been below two percent, so we thought two percent was a good number.
So any other questions?
So, so for example, when, when we get to the financial report, you, you'll see the, the anticipated transference that, that Ronnie and I had to do was seven tenths of a percent. So the two percent is, is
More than enough.
More than enough.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and I don't see any more hands up for discussion. All those in favor, by a show of hands, that is a unanimous vote. Twenty-two dash three-four-zero dash zero-one, order to receive a second update on the pending closure of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two budget and year-end reserves. Steve, are you gonna present this?
I am. So, um, I'm gonna try not to go into all of the detail in here, but this is, this is the financial report for which we're, we're trying to give you, uh, an update on what the year end will look like once the books are closed out at the end of this month. Uh, so what we're anticipating in there. Um, so as far as municipal expenditures, uh, we anticipate for overdrafts in the various departments, ten thousand six hundred and two under personnel. That was the, um, the absorption of the part-time HR generalist, for which we're asking for that position to go full-time now, that's later in the presentation. Uh, general assistants had a higher-than-anticipated, uh, year as far as, um, payout of provision of services, their overdraft, their anticipated overdraft at fifty-six thousand six hundred and seventy dollars, which we will, we do anticipate a seventy percent of that being reimbursed by the state, but nonetheless, we have to absorb that loss until the reimbursement comes in. Legal services, thirty-two thousand four forty-three, uh, the June legal bill is still outstanding, and we anticipate that to be in the neighborhood of ten thousand dollars, so that, that could climb as high as forty-two thousand dollars. It was an extremely difficult year for legal services this year. Uh, typically, we've kept that at eighty thousand dollars and or less. It was a quarter of a million dollars when I first started here. We've got that down to eighty thousand dollars a year and or less. Uh, but this year, we had several suits that had to be taken care of, uh, one of which was a fairly expensive foyer. Uh, we were, we're still being challenged by the Portland Press Herald and their, their mother owner, owning corporation. We're still working on that. We believe we will prevail. We've had a couple of difficult, um, human resource cases that we've prevailed on those as well, but nonetheless, it was a higher-than-anticipated, uh, year for legal services. Police department, uh, anticipated overdraft there as far as retirements are concerned. Uh, we've retired out, I believe, s- seven officers in the year, I think. I've, I've lost track, honestly, I've lost track. Uh, but it's an eleven thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollar, uh, as far as paying out their vacation time and such under that. Uh, we're able to cover all but eleven thousand dollars of that. And then the biggest occurrence is the staffing shortages in the SRCC. So that's why it was important this year, uh, that a portion of that, um, OPERA funds was going towards hiring back two additional staffers in there to reduce the overtime by about a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in the budget, and you can see the direct result. Because we're understaffed, it's a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar hit as far as, um, employee cost in that department. So that totals two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven. That is seven tenths of, of your operational budget that we had to do the transference on to cover for those losses. On the plus side, on the municipal expenditures, administration department, uh, that I work under is fifty-one thousand six hundred and seven dollars under budget. The majority of that comes from the delayed hiring of, of our communications, uh, uh, position. Uh, Ms. Wilson was just here, she was not hired until November. Uh, planning, uh, there's unfilled planning position and also had outage throughout the year as well on the administrative position is a hundred and two thousand dollars under. Employee benefits, insurances, that's your health insurance, workers' comp, uh, liability insurances and such, is under by a hundred and five thousand six hundred and sixty-four after we fully encumbered the HRA at three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars this year. The, uh, Public Protection Department, uh, we saw additional savings in the electricity of forty-two thousand eight hundred and six, uh, so that will not be expended. Our Public Works Department, after the council authorized to, uh, because of their severe staff shortages, there was a significant, uh, over a half million dollars worth of, uh, employee savings there. Two hundred thousand dollars of that has been authorized and is going towards additional streets and roads work this year. They still will lapse a balance anticipated of three-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand and change. Environmental Services, your transfer station, uh, same thing there, forty-six thousand dollars surplus in non-contract services that won't be expended. Recreation Department, uh, the director was hired, um, later than anticipated, so sixty-five thousand dollars savings there. And Parks, um, there's an eleven thousand dollar savings in there even after the council authorized, uh, authorization of converting their remaining high-pressure sodium lights to LEDs at a cost of seventeen thousand three forty-seven. So we anticipate, on the municipal services side, lapse balances of eight-hundred-and-nineteen thousand four-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars. And I'll bring this to a summary at the end. Uh, municipal revenues, pleased to report, we are holding our breath, we're pleased to report the automobile excise tax exceeded budget by sixty-two thousand and change. Revenue sharing, this is the success story, even though they had not yet changed the, um, four, four percent to the five percent in here, uh, just the performance factor in that, we, we saw receipts in excess of what we budgeted of nine-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand dollars this year. Yeah, so the state continues to talk about, you know, pending recession and the downturn in the economy and such under that, but, but these numbers are not showing that, at least as of yet. The homestead exemption, you see a, a deficit of two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars there. That's simply because we are awaiting our second payment on that. That should come in, uh, for example, last year's payment was two-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand, so we should be in excellent shape there once we receive the state's payment. Ambulance fees, uh, as the, the production of this report is, is two-hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollars over the anticipated receipts. Waste zero is a minor underperformance of eighty-seven-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars. I do not find that to be reflective of the, the economy. Uh, waste, waste is absolutely an economic indicator. I find if you look at the multi-year, uh, purchase, this is the purchase of, of the bags, the, the page you throw bags, it is very sporadic and unpredictable when the stores buy fairly large inventories, bring those into inventory, and we get our payments. It's, it's not linear by any stretch of the imagination, so, uh, if you continue to roll the average on that, we're in very good shape, it's just the timing on this. Waste transfer, transfer fees, we collected eighty-one hundred dollars more than anticipated. Recycling is up by thirteen, uh, thirteen thousand six hundred and sixty-two. Recreation fees, the fifty thousand dollar deficit that is showing there, that's actually been collected, but it's been put in the reserves in anticipation for taking over Memorial Gymnasium. I met with the superintendent on that this week, and we have a leadership meeting Thursday. Uh, that, that is a topic for your review on Thursday. This, 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 this Thursday? Yes. So Parks fees, collected eighty-one hundred dollars more. Veterans exemption is down by twenty-five thousand. Again, the state hasn't made their second payment to us, we anticipate in receiving that. Cable franchise fees, always a discouragement there, it's, it's down by eighty-six hundred dollars. Uh, we had budgeted for a three percent year-over-year loss, but actually are, are incurring a five percent year-over-year loss. So cable franchise fees, I'm very concerned in the future of that. I know Lanning Broadband aspires, as Comcast is building in the community, they aspire to have everybody on, uh, internet and streaming. So I'm not yet sure as to what that means under the FCC regulations on the multi-channel programming, if it goes through streaming as opposed to traditional cable. Solo lease exceeded projections by twenty-two thousand. Site plans, uh, this is the fees that we take in through site plan review, exceeded budget by nearly sixteen thousand dollars. Building permits exceeded projections by a hundred and six thousand dollars. Every year when we're projecting what those fees are gonna be for our building permits, we look at, you know, we, we extract out the, the big ones, right? You know, like high school construction, those big projects, we extrapolate those out. We take those out, we extrapolate that, but this is just an indication of the sheer volume that's come through the codes and planning office over the last year that they're dealing with. Bacon building license fees is, is, they're up by thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars over projections, and parking tickets are up by seventy-two hundred dollars over projections. So as of today, uh, we can easily project over a million dollars in revenues that we're not anticipated in, in the budget that would be coming forward. The municipal overlay, we had two-hundred-and-seventy thousand six hundred and eleven dollars, uh, that was the rounding factor and put into the overlay for last year's, uh, tax assessment. That has not been touched or will not be used. We had anticipated using one million, ten thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars from the unappropriated surplus. That was a combination of the traditional eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars plus additional revenues that were garnered from the, the prior year's operations. None of that will be touched this year. So we'll, that will remain in fund balance and will not be utilized. So at the bottom of the page, I put together a quick summary, the overdrafts are two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, the departmental lapse balances that we know of to date, and there will be more, is eight-hundred-and-nineteen thousand, so net expenditures in reserve of five-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand five eighty-seven. Uh, we had a net gain, subtotal of net gain, uh, for the revenues as listed above of one million, one hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. So we have a minimum retained earnings from operations this year of one-point-seven million dollars. There's no use of overlay at two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars, there's no use of undesigned fund balance of a million, so we have a minimum retention to transfer to undesigned fund balance, uh, at year end. Before we close our books, again, this is a projection, a minimum of just over three million dollars. So we had a very, very good year from operations.
Uh, before the council discusses or asks any questions, if there are any, can I have a, a motion, please? Can I see a hand? Counselor Martel? Is there a second?
Second.
Deputy Mayor Hurley? I didn't hear a second.
Oh, so I second that.
Oh, okay, I was waiting.
I was leaving it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions for the city manager or any, Counselor Hanselman?
And so I'll be bringing forward, uh, in the, in the subsequent items, the request for three, the establishment of three reserves to be taken from this fund balance before it's, it's, it lapses to fund balance.
That's the next agenda item.
Yes, correct.
Did you, was there anything, Counselor Hanselman? We have a next, we, this, we're just, we're just accepting the update. There's a next agenda item that concerns some of this. Oh, no, you're all set then. Anybody else? Seeing no other questions, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please by a show of hands. That is a unanimous vote. Twenty-two dash three-five-four dash zero-one, order to authorize the city manager to establish reserve accounts from fiscal year twenty-two year-end reserves of number one, HR generalist's full-time status, thirty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars, two, petroleum reserve of two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars, and three, paramedic training reserve, eighty thousand three hundred and thirty-four, for a total reserve amount of three-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand one hundred and sixty-nine. Um, Steve, I'm gonna let you explain it first, and then we'll, I'll ask for a motion, okay?
Again, so, um, these are items that, uh, continue to impact us at the tail end of the budget, uh, review, uh, review and acceptance process. Uh, we held, held these back, uh, not wanting to implement taxation, net taxation, any more than, than necessary in anticipation for having a close, a, a strong year-end closeout. Uh, what we would like to ask for is, we have discussed the significant, um, burden upon the HR department as far as the thirty-plus positions that we have vacant within the organization and the workload that that's creating in trying to attract quality individuals to fill those slots. So we'd like to convert the part-time HR generalist that was, that is in the budget this year to a full-time position. Uh, it's an additional twenty-five hours a week. The additional, uh, employment cost plus the insurances and benefits totals thirty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars, so we're requesting that be drawn from this three million dollars plus of reserves and set aside for that purpose. Also, there's an analysis in, in your, uh, packet here this evening that looks at all of the petroleum cross, uh, costs, heating fuel, propane, gasoline, and diesel. Uh, when we take that from the amounts that we used for the targets for the budget development, and we look at the last number of months and the increase, and now account for a slight decrease, uh, there still is, if we use no more than what we projected for any of these quantities, the new price structure that we're seeing out there before us would call for an additional two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars to cover our petroleum cost in, in this current fiscal year. So we're asking to create a petroleum reserve, um, if it's not necessary to use that, in other words, if prices continue to decline favorably, and we don't have to get into that reserve, it will be there for future use, uh, but at this point in time, if prices continue as they are currently, you will use all of that, two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand. And then the last, uh, piece that, that I'm, uh, asking to be created, the, uh, fire and EMS, the EMS program, I continue to talk to you about the fact that, um, nearly seventy-nine percent of all calls that they do are now EMS-based. That additional volume that they did this year took in, uh, two-hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollars more than what they, they had originally, we had regularly, originally budgeted for volumes. I'm asking to create a reserve, uh, of eighty thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars, of which forty thousand one hundred and sixty-seven will be used each of, of this year and, and one, and that same amount in the subsequent year, coupled with the same amount of money that the council, uh, appropriated through the OPERA funds, that will allow us to train two paramedics as opposed to one each of year, in each of the years. When we look at the retirements in the, um, fire and EMS department, we're, we are getting strategically short of paramedic-trained, uh, individuals, so that, they are critical to our advanced life support, uh, status that we maintain, we provide for ourselves, as well as ALS backup for other, uh, communities. Uh, so this would get us, uh, a more rapid implementation of four paramedics coming from our current staffing infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Um, before the city, uh, before the council discusses, um, could I have a motion, please? Raise your hand if you'd like to make a motion. Counselor Termath?
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, to
Approve.
Approve, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second? Counselor Martel? Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion by the council? Counselor Hanselman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a question, Steve, um, in regards to the paramedic training reserve, and so, and it might be two-part, one, it might be just clarification on the use of reserve accounts, um, for those of us that are newer to that concept. Um, we've recently, this year, done one or two others, but prior to that, I hadn't had experience as a council member with reserves. Um, it's my understanding that we usually use a reserve kind of for like a, uh, unplanned, right? We just finished our budget, just proved it, we're in the new fiscal year, so if we have, uh, an extraordinary expenditure and, uh, that we know is coming up after our budget's been finalized, and we have, uh, these funds available, that would be like a good use of, of reserves. You know, we already know where the fuel situation has adjusted. That makes sense to me. Um, it's kind of in line with the HR generalist in the sense that at the, but in the budget process, we didn't realize the extent of volume of, you know, that department was gonna see. It's clear now that we need that position. So with the training, I guess, my question is, it seems more like a regular budget item as opposed to an extraordinary, um, expenditure, and I just wonder why it, I can't remember, honestly, and I couldn't find my notes, I probably, if it was in the original budget process and got cut out, or, I, I'm just looking for more clarification.
So the, currently, right now, the, the forty thousand one sixty-seven, there's one unit of that in there, and it was funded through OPERA, right? So opposed to, as opposed to putting, it's, it's in the expense budget, but we have that use of OPERA funds as offsetting that. This would be one additional unit, so we trained two paramedics, and we have, we have interested individuals for that now. So we trained two per year instead of one. Uh, again, when we, when we've looked at the, the attrition that we've had as far as retirements, it's, it's been our paramedic staff. We're getting critically low as far as paramedics. So we have, um, one member training in advanced EMT, going from an EMT to advanced EMT. This would put two paramedics in there. So the, the department has the, the funds for the training costs and such under this. This is the offset for the overtime, travel, and lost time within the department. When you take one of those people out, you put them into the training program, because the clinical time to go to the paramedic level is, is crazy. The amount of time they spend out of service doing clinical work in the ERs and, and with other services.
Counselor Hanselman, do you have other questions?
So, and... So, and this is scheduling, looking forward for a two-year period as opposed to just one?
Correct.
Just want to have that set aside.
Correct. That's, that's the request. So there's, when I'm using, you know, if the council authorizes this, they'll set the reserves aside. So in other words, the HR generalist, I know that's going to get used in the first year, so that's gone. The petroleum reserve may or may not get fully expended, but that money would be there, no different than the school department, in setting those strategic reserves aside. We, as a city, have not done that. So we're start, I would like to start that when we have very favorable years, establish these reserves, and have another mechanism to buffer net taxation so that we can keep that at around that two percent at most. And again, the training reserves, I don't know that this kind of money would be available in a subsequent year. So that's why I'm coming out to ask for a two-year reserve on this. They had an exceptionally good year with the ambulance. Again, two-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand dollars over budget. I think it's fair and reasonable to take a portion of that and put, reinvest back into the departmental staff towards paramedic training.
Counselor Stackpole?
So, all this aside, what we've been talking about, Steve, how much is actually going into municipal reserves?
Three-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand one-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars.
Undesignated?
No. So this, if you authorize this tonight before that remain, before the lapsed balances, net of operations and expenses and revenues is lapsed to fund balance, you're going to take about, under ten percent of that, you're going to create these reserves. The remainder of that will go to fund balance.
Okay, but, so, I think somewhere you're talking about beginning with like three, three million dollars?
That's today's projections. I can tell you it will be far in excess of that. So I believe that you, if you establish this three-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand dollars worth of reserves, you still will put in three million dollars plus into undesigned this year.
Right. And so, you can help me out here, Counsel, Counsel Hanselman, if you, if you want to. But we do that, we're going to put approximately three million dollars in undesigned. But each year, when it comes to passing the budget, we're holding the amount of undesigned we use at eight-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars. I know previous year, we used a million dollars. Is there any way for the taxpayers to access this excess three million dollars that's undesigned so that in future years, they can kind of get paid back too, like everyone else is?
You could. You could access that in a subsequent budget year and pull, pull more from your undesigned fund balance to offset net taxation.
And I guess that's what I'm trying to, trying to get at, so that next year, when we talk about working with the budget, maybe we can do more than eight-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars, which everything worked out this year. But one of the things I was going to propose is, once again, dip into that a little bit more. So if we're making money on that, I think we should be ready to give some of that back to the taxpayers in future years. I realize it's too late to do that now. I think that was sort of what you were getting at, Counsel Hanselman, yeah?
Thank you, Counselor Stackpole. Counselor Termath?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Steve, can you just speak upon the accounts that you're going to establish? Are these going to be high-interest accounts that you're going to put this money into? Or are you going to get something back from it, or?
So this, this will be a subrogation of the funds, so that it will stay on your books, so it doesn't, doesn't lapse to fund balance. It will be there and available for use, no different than a special revenue account. It goes to your, but it stays in your overall cash balance. So our assessor is, excuse me, our treasurer has kept everything short-term right now because we want to chase the market up, because the market is going up as far as points. So we're going to chase that market up and then hold those a little bit longer term if we see that the interest rate might be coming back down if we go into a recession or start approaching that, so. So this is, this will be, you're creating the reserve as a segregation of those funds. It's still part of your overall cash balance, and it will be part of the overall investment portfolio.
Other questions by counselors? I don't see any hands, and I know we have a motion and a second and no other discussion. Buy a show of hands, all those in favor. That is a unanimous vote. Twenty-two dash three-four-five dash zero-one. Order to accept a grant offer from the Federal Aviation Administration in the amount of one-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand five-hundred dollars for Airport Improvement Project three dash two-three dash zero-zero-four-four dash three, zero-three-seven dash two-zero-two-two. Update airport master plan study at the Sanford Seacoast Regional Airport. There you are. You're quick. Thanks, Allison.
Small and efficient. Good evening, I'm Allison Avi. I'm the airport manager of our Sanford Seacoast Regional Airport. So we're all familiar with this project at this point. This is the culmination of all of our efforts to be able to obtain this funding from the federal government and from the Maine Department of Transportation. They have a share in this as well. So if you'll remember, we set up this project, we made a scope of work, then we got an independent fee estimate to see how much it would cost from a third party for the consultant to do this project. Planning projects work like that. It's the way that we bid it, so to speak. And then we can negotiate within ten percent of that. So that independent fee estimate was agreed upon, and the council approved that. Then we used that number, we went for a grant application, and now this is the successful offer that we've obtained from that grant application so that we can move forward with the project.
Thank you, Allison. Would there be someone who'd like to raise their hand and make a motion, please?
I will.
Counselor Hanselman? Sorry, is there a second?
Second.
No, I'm going to call on her, Jonathan. Well...
It's okay.
I'm, I'm going to wait for the, I'd like you just to wait till I call on you to make the motion. So Counselor Hanselman made the motion. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
I second the motion.
Thank you. Trying to train them to raise their hands. It's very hard, but it's much easier...
I tried to convince her to stay on one side.
It's not that, it's that if you would just raise your hands, then I would, pretend we're in kindergarten. They can do it.
You guys are having too much fun.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, buy a show of hands, all those in favor. It is unanimous. Thank you.
It's a mid-meeting breakdown.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Hurley? Did you get in trouble in kindergarten?
Yes.
Okay, well...
I was actually very quiet in kindergarten.
I find that extremely difficult to believe, but that's okay. I wasn't around. Twenty-two dash three-five-six dash zero-one, right? Order to authorize the city manager to approve use of city roads for the Bike MS Great Main Getaway Event on August seventh, two thousand twenty-two, as detailed in the council packet. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
I'll make a motion that we approve the use of our roads, which is very minimal.
As there is, Counselor Brink?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Did somebody want to just talk about this a little bit? Because it is kind of a neat...
Yeah, I can give you a quick recap on this. This, this is the most organization, organized request we get all year long. So I want to compliment them on that. This is, we've had this same request for years now. They do a Saturday and Sunday event. They come through a very small portion of our community. DC Strout always reviews this when it comes in. We've had no issues with it in the past. If you look at the list of roads that they're, they're coming in, they're coming in on the, from the mountain road onto Ridley, what, Ridley onto Yeaton, Yeaton over to Railroad, and Railroad out to Jabong, and so it's just that little north-estally portion of our community that they go through. It is a, it's a large event, but they're, the bikers are spread out. They have chase cars, and there's, there's stops, the stops are listed in here and such under that. And if they find that anybody is riding in adverse to their rules, they give them one warning. If they catch them again, then they snag them off the route, bundle them up and take them away. So, again, I'm always very appreciative of how they put forward this request. It's done very, very well with the maps and the request and such under that, and would, would seek your passage.
Thank you, Steve. Any other, Counselor Hanselman?
I just want to know if city manager is going to be writing in it.
Boy, I've, I've backed off the last couple of years. Had a couple in your misses out there on the road, and been sticking to the trails and less, less on the road, so, yeah.
Okay, so that's a no, I think. Nice way to say that, though, Steve. Any other discussion? Counselor Martell?
I just had a quick question around the, the route. It looks like it goes down one-eleven for a little bit. Has that been an issue as far as safety goes?
Well, they're not in the portion of one-eleven that's in our community, but we've, we've not had, we've not had any reports of occurrences with this, this event in any way, shape, and fashion.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, so any other discussion? Seeing none, then I will call a vote. All those in favor? Buy a show of hands, that is a unanimous vote. Okay, twenty-two dash three-five-seven dash zero-one. Order to approve the closure of Holdsworth Park to the general public during summer camp from seven-thirty AM to five-thirty PM on Wednesdays and Fridays through August fifth. Who's going to present on this, Steve?
I believe Director Lloyd is on Zoom with us this evening.
Yep. Good evening, everybody. We would like to, as it says, close the Holdsworth Park to the general public for the hours of seven-thirty to five-thirty in the evening. And this is just for preventative caution and the safety of our children who register through Sanford Parks and Rec for summer camp. It will just be on Wednesdays and Fridays, so there's six remaining dates left in this summer, tomorrow being one of them, and then Friday, and then next week, it would be the twenty-seventh and twenty-ninth, and then August third and eighth, uh, third and fifth. This would just make it easier on our staff to know who is at the park and who is within the, the summer camp that is attending the parks on those days. It will be easier on the waterfront director and the lifeguards to differentiate who exactly they are looking at and looking for. With this closure, it would allow our staff to call the police and give the police a leg to stand on if somebody was not obeying the rules. Again, we're doing this as a preventive measure, just in case anything were to happen in the future. We've, we would rather be proactive than reactive. Originally, I asked, not quite in, in this grandicus, but prior to the edit, for three days, which included Tuesdays, we've consolidated with, we've consolidated one of our playground camps to attend with a different camp on Wednesdays, so it would no longer be close to the public's on Tuesdays. And we do want to compromise with the public, like this is, this is just to keep the children safe at camp, so we know who's there and who's intermingling with them. But if the general public wants to come down and park and utilize the trail, or utilize an unused pavilion, or eat lunch in the, in the field, we're not going to ask them to leave. We're just asking them not to be at the beach or swimming in the swim area with our kids at the same time, or not to use one of the tables in the pavilions at the same time that our camp is. So the overall goal is just to separate the public out from our summer camps while we are utilizing the park for the remaining six days.
Thank you, Brady. Could I have a motion to approve? Deputy Mayor Hurley?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Counselor Hanselman?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion by the council, I'm just going to ask a question. I'm looking for, I was looking over there, and he's right in my computer screen. I guess I'm, I'm not used to Zoom anymore. Brady, could you just tell me on those days, when you have, like on those Wednesdays and Fridays, and we have campers at that, at that beach area, how many do you have there as a general rule?
So, right now, the remaining dates, we will have on Wednesdays roughly a hundred-and-sixty at most, and on Fridays, a hundred-and-twenty at most. We did have a couple of all-camp days, which is where we had all of our programs attend, and we did different festivities, such as bringing the Axe Women of Maine, and had kind of a field day. And those days, which we don't have any more of them, there's only two per summer, those days had upwards of two-hundred-and-fifty-plus kids.
So I can understand why there might be an issue with knowing who the campers are and who the camper, and other people that might be there that are with other families. Can you also tell me what your staffing levels are?
We're, we're right at a one-to-eight ratio.
Okay, and the age of the kids?
The age of the kids on these days will go from roughly K through three or four through eight, depending on the day. Wednesdays are our younger groups. But by consolidating the Tuesday group to attend Wednesday, there's also a few four-year-olds in there as well. So pre-K through eighth, eighth grade or so.
So I understand the issue, so thank you for that. And on the days when the camp is open to the general public, it is staffed with lifeguards? Is that correct?
For the most part, yes. If they take a break or something, we adjust the sign to say that there is no lifeguard on duty.
All right, thank you. Counsel, any other counselors' questions? Counselor Brink?
How do you communicate with the public? Because a lot of people come from different directions to go down to the beach. And so, is there going to be a sign posted? Do you have somebody just stationed at the top of the stairway to let people know?
So, so far, we created a few hand-drawn signs, and we posted three of them. One in the upper parking lot, where it's paved off of one-oh-nine before you get to the entrance to the actual park. One on the sign at the entrance to the park, and then one on the, the guardrail as you're parking. And we have staffed it so far with, when we see people coming, we just ask, obviously there's no actual closure at this point, but we've been asking the general public to not come in as we have summer camp there.
Counselor Termath?
Yes, all right. Good evening, Brady. Real quick question. Now, for the swimming area, do you have the ability to rope off a certain section, like with buoys and, and rope, to, to say, hey, this is our area of swimming? So the general public does know the difference in that regard? And then I have a follow-up question.
So, yes, but what, when we're there for this closure, we're asking that it's not that the swim area is not open to the general public either, just because it's even, it's harder to judge who's who while they're swimming in water than it is on land. There's a three-tier roped-off swim area. One's shallow, one's medium, one's deeper. And the children do a swim test to determine which they are allowed to swim in, in the beginning of the summer, and then that carries on through the remainder.
Counselor Termath, you had another question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, so I'm just kind of, you know, confused a little bit because of the fact that this is a public park, right? And this is, a lot of the residents that live in or around this area do recreate in that, in that vicinity, and, and a lot of folks do like to come and go throughout the day. So I'm just saying, you know, just as a, you know, as a PR standpoint, it's tough to really wrap my head around the fact of shutting the whole park down just for those days of camping.
Could you reiterate, Brady, that you're not shutting down the whole park? You're really shutting down the swimming area?
It's, it's really the swimming area and the pavilions where we are. I mean, if we're in the field and playing games, then we would work around the general public if there were folks there. Just for an example, we, I was there, I don't remember the day last week, but I was there, and there was a group of, a group of people, I don't know if they were all together or whatnot, but I did a little walk-through, and there's a little kind of hidden swimming hole off to the right. If you go to the right through the field, there's some rocks and an open swim area there, and there was, I would say roughly six to eight people down there swimming, some small children, and it looked like some adults as well. So we're not, we're just trying to separate, again, separate the public from being intermingled, intertwined through our entire summer camp to, to make it safer for the children, not knowing who everybody is.
Thank you, Brady. Any other, Counselor Hanselman?
Thank you. I just want to say that I understand the disappointment that some families have felt not being able to access our Holdsworth Park beach. But Brady, I really appreciate you're looking out for our kiddos who are attending summer camp. I think that's of the utmost importance. And I kind of liken it to the fact that we have other public facilities that are used, for example, for baseball, and during the time it's in use, it's not open to the public. So I liken it to that type of situation. But I appreciate your being here tonight, and thank you.
Counselor Martell, you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you. So, do you plan to make any changes to this memo proposal to adjust it for other people to be able to use the park? And have you had issues in the past with the public also being at the, the beach with the campers?
We, we've had a couple of scares. I wouldn't call them close, close issues, but again, we're trying to be preventative rather than reactive if something were to occur. I can, I can note, and I'm going to ask you to repeat your question, but I just want to say this first. I was there when we had an all-reck... I was there when we had an all-rec day, which was the 250-ish kids, and we had the Axe Women doing their log-rolling portion of the show down on the beach, and there was an adult couple on the beach while all the other kids were sitting on the tiered, the tiered grassy area looking down upon the water. And there was a woman, I ended up calling 911 as I was concerned, there was a woman heavily trying to awake her husband, and nothing was happening for close to 10 minutes in the midst of this show. And then the police came as they exited the facility, and I don't know what happened from there, but it's just to keep stuff like that outside of the middle of our camp. And could you please repeat your question to, I believe you were asking, how would we change to the policy to allow people in?
Well, right, right now, the way it's written, it basically closes down the whole park for the, for the whole day, for both of those days. I just have concerns that, you know, that that's pretty much the only swimming area for the, for the city, unless maybe you go down towards Ted's, Fred Clams is a little beach down there, but for the area, there's really not much around unless you go farther away. So I just want to make sure that we're retaining as much access as possible.
Yep. And, and like I said to start, we, we do want to be flexible with the public. So if you're going to bring your dog down and you want to park down there and go walk on the trails, you're more than welcome to. If you want to use the, the park outside of the scope of where our summer camp is utilizing the facility, you're more than welcome to. But we are going to ask on those days that we're there and we're swimming, I don't want to throw estimates out there, but say six hours a day, that the general public is not swimming throughout the other two hours that we're there, because we might be rotating groups, or the schedule's just up in the air. So again, this is just for the safety of the children and allowing our staff to know who is within our, our groups there while we utilize the park on these two days.
Thank you, Brady. I want to just also say that I'm really pleased with the robust recreation summer program that we have, because for a lot of parents, they would not be able to work in the summer if they didn't have a safe place to send their kids. And that's what this program is about. I've never been in a community, and I've had the opportunity to go around and see other summer programs, where it isn't closed to the general public while that summer program is going on there. And I think we, we, as a community, have committed to creating and providing a safe summer program for kids. And if this means a couple of days a week that the general public can't access, I can live with that, because I know how hard it is to run those programs. I had kids that worked in those programs when they were in high school and college. So, and I think it's, it's, it's great that we're able to at least staff the lifeguards on the other days, because I know there are places at the beach that are not able to find lifeguards, and it is not safe to swim without a lifeguard. So I'm fine with this two days. It's only going to be for a couple of more weeks, and there are three days a week when anybody can go there. You're not going to switch a day if it rains, are you?
No.
Okay, then I'm, I am totally satisfied that on Wednesdays and Fridays, the general public will know that it's camp days at those parks, for the most part, and, but there are three days in the week where they could access it, and that will end as of August 5th. Counsel Martel?
I'd like to propose that we amend this to state the beach area only, so that the rest of the park would be accessible for general use.
Is there a second for that motion? Raise your hand if you'd like to second it. There's a second by Counsel Turmath?
I second the motion to amend.
Discussion? Can I just say I'm not in favor of that, but Counsel Brink, go ahead.
I am also not in favor of it, because how it's written here, if there's somebody, any place in the park that is causing a problem, you can then call the police, and they can remove that person, because we, as a council, have said the place is closed. If it isn't closed, then that could be a problem with removing some people who have caused problems. And my daughter does walk through that park with her children, and she has encountered several times where people have been doing very inappropriate things. So I think with the large number of children and the reasonable price our citizens get to pay for that service, I think we need to make it the safest environment possible. So I am not in favor of the amendment. I'm in favor of it as written.
Thank you, Counsel Brink. Any other discussion? Counsel Hanselman?
Thank you. I, I think the point of confusion might be that, Brady, you indicated that it would be open for use, and I think you're trying to be accommodating, but I'd like to hear from you in regards to, I think the question is, you know, is it open or not open, or is a park portion open or not open? But you were saying earlier that you'd be open, you would be amenable, I should say, to having a portion of the park be open, which I think is causing the confusion. So from your perspective, and I don't even know, I hate to put our deputy chief on, on the hook here, but, or on the spot, but enforcement, I'm curious if that is an issue, if we just close the beach versus closing the whole park, to Counsel Brink's point. So just looking for clarification, Brady, from you and maybe DC Small.
I guess I was trying to accommodate the public in saying that they could utilize the park when our camps are not in the, in the field, at the playground, swimming on the tiered wall, but if it's easier, then I would say, yes, let's close the entire park to everybody. We do have an adult staff there who is stationed, along with our lifeguards and our camp directors, who have been greeting people as they, they may enter the park to go swimming, and we've been asking them to turn around, and for the most part, we've received, I don't want to say all positive, because there's obviously been quite a bit of social media about this, but we've received, for the most part, understanding feedback that, okay, that does make sense. So if it's easier just to shut the entire thing down to the public, I guess I would rather do that than say, you guys can go over in the field away from our camps. Again, we're just trying to separate the public from being right in the midst of our, of our children that we are supervising. So I guess I'll ask for guidance from the council on what you would like to do, because I'm not, I'm not asking to just shut down the swimming area. I'm asking for the general public not to be in, in the midst of our summer camp while we are at this facility.
Thank you, Brady. We'll be voting on that amendment in just a minute, but I'm going to let DC Small.
Good evening. Eric Small, deputy chief of the police department. I think it becomes very gray if we try to enforce different sections of the park, allowing people to play up in the field, using the swing sets, having lunch under the pavilion, not swimming at the beach. Whatever decision you make, it needs to be enforceable by law enforcement. The worst case is, you know, we have an officer go down there, and, you know, we have to remove somebody at the park and get in some use-of-force-type situation, which that's the last thing we want to happen. So the clearer you make it for, for us, the easier it will be to enforce. I think Brady just mentioned the whole park. Essentially, that is the easiest thing for the police department.
Thank you, DC Small. Okay, Counsel Stackpole, and then I'll let the city manager, and I saw that Counsel Turmath has his hand up again. I will let everybody fully have their say before we vote on the amendment.
Sure. So let me just say, first of all, God bless the city of Sanford, but it is summertime. We are a city. If you are driving your car up and down Main Street, you do see different people this time of year walking our streets, and a lot of times partaking in our public spaces. It doesn't appear to me to be a problem. I, I know everyone's working hard to keep that situation under control, but there are different people in our community this time of year. And what the recreation manager or director is trying to do is to keep the kids safe. I think it's just that simple. And I think DC Small's advice to close the whole park for enforcement reasons, because you just don't know what you're going to encounter, unfortunately, in, in this day and age. I, I think, unfortunately, we need to close the whole park down for the sake of keeping our kids safe. And I do wish there was another alternative. I think if possible, there's, this is something that needs to be thought about in future years, but where we are right now, this seems to be the best solution. Maybe not for the everyday beachgoers, but that's not 150, 160 to 250 people that are going to be down there with the kids. It's, it's going to affect an unfortunate handful of people and families that may have to rearrange their plans for the day, but it's not going to be a major inconvenience to the, and I'm sure if you went around and asked those people, they'd rather keep the kids safe, and they'd go someplace else. So I'm, I'm not in favor of the amendment, but I am in favor of the motion.
Thank you. Counsel Stackpole, city manager?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. This, this has been a hard one for me. So I, I understand the balance between the public's ability to use our public facilities for, for all, all purposes. What happens with our, our school playgrounds? When the school's not in session, the public goes and utilizes those playgrounds. When the school's in session, the public is not on those playgrounds.
That's right.
When our schools are in session, the public is not in those buildings unless they're cleared through. So I'm just asking for equity, that our Parks and Recreation staff is not overtasked with the fact that the general population is mixing in amongst 120 to 250 kids, right? When they're under our charge. I get these phone calls. I deal with our police department. They deal with the situations. There's potential for inappropriate contact. We know that. We know that. And we've had accusations that has happened and everything else. We deal with all of that, right? Those kids are under our care for the time that we're operating these programs. I'm simply asking, as our director is, that we have the same type of equity that our school department has when they have those same age demographics under their care, that there's separation in the programming for those areas that we know that there is a propensity for there to be a mixed contact, especially in that swimming situation. What has happened? I don't know, three, four years ago, we had a, we had a drowning death that was not under our purview. They drowned up there. The kids witnessed it. Our staff had to deal with it, and they're doing CPR. The kids were traumatized by all of that. I'm just asking for that recognition.
Thank you, Steve. Who did I?
Turmath.
Counsel Turmath. And then I think I have some other people, but I, I really want to move us along, because we've got a, still got a big agenda. So Counsel Turmath, go ahead.
Thank you. Now, just, I just want to make a quick comment on this. You know, speaking of public safety, I'm all for that, absolutely. Let me make that clear. But what I'm getting at here is that this is a natural resource, right? We're coming into, you know, the heart of summer. A lot of folks that live in and around that park utilize that park just as much as anybody else in our community, right? To get relief from the heat, to, you know, because a lot of people don't have air conditioning. So I don't want to violate anybody's rights to not utilize a natural resource or a public park, because of the fact that we're going to close it for two days and say, now you don't have access to a natural resource.
Thank you, Counsel Turmath. We'll be voting on the amendment first. Did anyone that's on, I can't see the Zoom people. Can you? Is there a way I can see that? Yes, we just have to speak to the amendment, which is to, to close, the amendment is to just only close the beach area. So is there anyone that has their hand up on Zoom that wanted to speak to that as a member of the general public? Could you see anybody?
Diane Connolly, Chris Farwell.
Okay, I'll give you each a minute or so, because I've got to move this along, and I'm pretty sure I know where the council's going on this. So Diane Connolly, could you please identify yourself and put on your video, please?
Madam Mayor, this is Diane Connolly from Springville. I do not have video on my own computer. It's too old. I just want to ask a clarifying question. Can the city regulate water? I'm, I'm not saying not to have.
Okay, Diane, I appreciate, I appreciate your question, but that really isn't, I don't think, really germane to the, the amendment of whether we close the whole park or the other, but I will put that under advisement. Chris Farwell, could you speak, please? And if you have your video, could you please show your video? Thank you.
I do, yeah. This is Chris Farwell. I'm in Springville Ward 1. I'm a lifetime resident of Springville, 50 years at this point. And I utilize the.
Your, your audio is.
I don't remember where the.
I'm sorry, I think we missed all of that.
What was that?
I, we didn't, it didn't come through. Your, your audio was, was not understandable.
How is it now?
It's better. If you stand still, stay right there, and let's see what happens.
All right, thank you. I was just saying that in the 50 years that I've lived in Springville, I've never seen the rec department go to the extreme of closing the, the beach area, not to mention now possibly the whole area, for two full days. I could understand half-days. My other comment is, is that when the rec program goes on field trips, say if they go to Fontana, I don't know where the rec program goes, those facilities don't close to the general public. And so I understand the numbers of youth. I number, I understand the potential for danger and hazard. Danger and hazard happens everywhere. It happened on the Sanford Trails. We didn't close the trails.
Thank you, Mr. Farwell. Any other discussion by the council? Then we will be voting on the amendment. The amendment is to cha, to change this request to only close the, the beach portion to the general public. All those in favor of that amendment, would they raise their hands, please? That is two. All those opposed? That is five. Motion fails. Now, we have on the table the regular motion to approve the closure of Holdsworth Park to the general public during summer camp from 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. on Wednesdays and Fridays through August 5th, which I should point out is, how many exact days is that?
Two weeks.
Six.
Four days.
Well, it's a little bit more than four, because it's, tomorrow is Wednesday, and Friday this week. So it's six, which leaves three days a week, and then the rest of, after August 5th, seven days a week, because there's seven days in the week, and it's just not those Mondays through Fridays. So there's five days that the general public can access that park. Just putting that out there. So we have a motion on the floor to approve that closure. If there's no more discussion, all those in favor, please signify by raising their hands. One, two, three, four, five in favor. All those opposed? Two opposed. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Brady.
Thank you.
Okay, 22-365-01, order to authorize the closure of a portion of School Street from Washington Street to Bodwell Street for the Sanford Police Department National Night Out on Tuesday, August 9th, from 3:00 to 8:30 p.m. Deputy Mayor Hurley has her hand up.
That's because I want to go fast. Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Counsel Brink?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We probably don't need to have a discussion, except to advertise the fact, and we will have another meeting before August 9th, which we will make sure that we discuss it, but why don't you just give a brief little?
The mayor's going to be in a dunk tank.
No, I am not. Now, listen, I'm going to just say one thing.
What?
That was the most disgusting dunk tank I saw last year. And if you think that I would, after seeing that, I would ever agree to that?
I just had to lighten the mood a little bit.
Thank you for that.
We do intend to get cleaner water. It's, it's, it's going to be a fun event. It's a police department's cookout, where we can intermingle with the public, and I'll have a dunk tank, and some face painting, and you guys have been there. It's a good time, so we're looking forward to it.
It is a good time. So we have a, a motion and a second on the floor. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Road's closed.
Thank you.
We amend the motion, councilors, if required.
Right, right. Hey, you know what? You have to know how to say no. I have no problem with that.
Hey, can we put a motion out that the mayor goes in the dunk tank?
If you vote on that one, I just don't think you ought to do that. Honestly, if you had seen that water last year, you would just say, no one should have been dunked in that. Okay, 22-363-01, order to review and accept the proposed slate of officers as put forward for the Maine Municipal Association Executive, Executive Committee. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed slate of officers. There's nobody over and above what they have opened for seats.
Correct. Is there a second? Counsel Hanselman?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Steve, you just want to explain for people that are watching what the Maine Municipal Association Executive Committee does.
Yes, so it puts forward the slate of work for, for the year. They have separate subcommittees that take care of the liability insurances, as well as the health trust as well, but they oversee the. as the health trust as well, but they oversee the general operations of the Maine Municipal Association that represents, I believe, approximately four hundred and sixty communities here in our state. So there's a vice president, one-year term. So this ends their nomination process. They put out papers earlier in the year where they seek elected and appointed officials for these positions. So in future years, when this, when that comes forward, you have the opportunity to put your resume in and run for any of these positions on the executive committee. The incoming vice president will serve the next year as president, and then the executive committee has three-year terms on a rotating basis. Diane Hines, as town manager, fulfilled that process as the incoming vice president, if so voted. And the new executive committee members would be Ivan McPike, mayor, town of Hamden, Philip Crawell, city manager, city of Auburn, and Anthony Ward, town manager, town of Casco.
Thank you, Steve. Any other, any questions by councilors, comments? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, by a show of hands? That is unanimous vote. Twenty-two dash three, zero, one, dash, zero, one. Order to cast a ballot for the community development, for Community Development Director Ian Houseseal to serve as Senate District Thirty-three Representative on the Maine Municipal Association Legislative Policy Committee for July twenty twenty-two to June twenty twenty-four. That's for two years.
Becky wants to.
Counselor Brink?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor, Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, by a show of hands? It is unanimous. I will train her. Sorry, Maury, I couldn't resist. You'll get me back, I know you will. Okay. Twenty-two dash three, six, six, dash, zero, one. Order to authorize an application for the twenty twenty-two Justice Assistance Grant funds in the amount of eighteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars for the police department to be used by September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Deputy Chief?
Yes, good evening. Tonight, we're asking for approval of this federal grant, which is a zero match, on behalf of the city, for eighteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars. What we did at the police department is decentralized the decision by asking the boots on the ground, what they thought would be best for the agency to support the mission. And I believe it was already spoken to tonight about the traffic officer, which is a very successful program. Some new numbers on that. Officer Buckland has a hundred and seventy-one stops and he's covered ten accidents, too, another thing he's doing. So he's very active and he's fielding a lot of phone calls and a lot of different speed enforcement in the area. And to support his mission, we think it'd be best to purchase two Speed Alert Radar messaging signs, and these can serve as dual purpose. These signs mount on poles and are easily movable, and they measure speed and they can also have messages that can be displayed, like during, when school's about ready to start, you could have it, drive safe, schools began, or something to that effect. So they also measure speed and record different data. So we think that would support the traffic officer and the mission of the police department, which has been, you know, obviously pointed out as an important thing for the city. Also, we mentioned at the beginning of the meeting about recruitment and the hiring. We're down seven offices right now, as was mentioned earlier. And we're looking to advertise, we have advertised on radio, and you may have heard us on WHB already, so we're looking to do some, more possibly, some radio. And you've seen the sheriff, I'm sure, on Smitty's, before you watch the movie. And we're researching, making calls to do videos like that as well. So we're going to look at some stuff we've never done before to see if we can pull in some new candidates for the police job. And that's about it.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve? Counselor Hanselman?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Is there a second? Counselor Termath?
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do you have a timeline, Deputy Chief, for those once they're approved?
I asked Jerry that today, and it takes a few months to get the funds put into our account, but as soon as we get them, I've been in contact with the rep for the speed signs and.
How many speed signs will we actually have when we get those, then?
Two.
We'll have.
Well, we have the one that you've seen out on Main Street all week.
Right.
By Brett and Ab, I believe. That is owned by Public Works.
Oh, okay.
We worked together with them to move it. Pete and Rick communicate and decide where that's going to go, and we do enforcement off that. But these will be two signs that Rick will have access to, any of us for that matter. And we can put them where, you know, different complaints come in, they can do thumbs up, they have blue lights on them. You've gone to Wells recently, you've seen they have a lot of those, slow people down.
I think they're really helpful.
Yeah, they are very helpful. And given the importance of the traffic officer and the mission of the police department, I think it's a good purchase. And also, it's good that the, we asked all the officers what they wanted. And in the end, you know, the leadership had a meeting and we think this is just best for the department right now.
Well, thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Hanselman?
I just wanted to mention this came out of public safety with full consensus.
Excellent. Anybody else? We have a motion and a, we do, I had a motion and a second. All those in favor, by a show of hands? That is unanimous vote.
Have a nice night, everyone.
Twenty-two dash three, six, four, dash, zero, one. Oh, another really interesting subject. Order to adopt the twenty twenty-two York County Main Hazard Mitigation Plan. This, I'm sorry, I tried reading this one, but.
I read it.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
I'll make a motion to accept.
And Counselor Brink?
Second.
A motion and a second. Steve, do you want to just give a, what we're voting on, just for the general public? Because I know it's important, but it was kind of a snorer.
That's right. I'd like to ask Alex Hamerly, our director of EMA.
Oh, sorry, Alex, I didn't mean to offend you.
He's with us by Zoom this evening. If you could give us a quick recap on this, please, Alex.
Yeah, so every five years, we have to go through an update of the hazard mitigation plans for York County. We're a little bit behind on this one. The last time we did one was two thousand and fifteen, so. But this, this update has all of the latest information on statistics for our community. And there's a section that's been added that recognizes drought as being a hazard for York County. And by approving this hazard mitigation plan, you set the city up for being in a position to be able to receive mitigation funding through FEMA.
Thank you, Alex. Is anybody questions? Beck, Counselor Brink has a question.
Well, I have a question, but I have something that needs to be corrected. Under Section four dash forty-six, under the emergency shelter data, we have Sanford Junior High School needs to be changed to Sanford Middle School. It's no longer the junior high. Sanford Junior High is Sanford Pride. So two changes. Sanford High School is now Sanford Middle School. Sanford Junior High is now Sanford Pride Elementary.
Good catch.
And then I also have a question under Section five dash nineteen and twenty, where it says about Rhode, Sanford Roads, and I only looked at Sanford, I didn't look at the other communities, which made it a lot more readable, because that was one long, boring piece of legislature. The Sanford Road Project, who pays for that? Where we prioritize what has to be done? I mean, there was, you know, quite a few things on there, about twenty things for Sanford. So is that state-funded when we repair stuff like that? Because I know a lot of them have been completed. Or is that just local funds?
It's a combination of local, typically, it's a combination of local and federal funds. We apply for FEMA mitigation funding grants that require some portion of match, and it depends on which grant program you're in. But we can apply for federal funding to supplement the city's funding and reduce our overall costs.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brink. I like, I'm glad somebody is really deep reading this stuff because, I'll tell you, I had a tough time with this one. Anybody else? Steve, do you have anything that you need to add for this?
No, just typically, when we're able to apply for, when the governor makes the declaration and that's accepted by the federal government, we typically, when we make a typical application to fix roadways and culverts and such under that, it's usually an eighty, ten, ten, so eighty percent federal, ten percent state, and ten percent local.
And absent a mitigation plan, it would be difficult for us to.
We couldn't even.
We couldn't access that money.
So I had asked our director earlier today, because I wanted clarification on this. So this was produced regionally for all of York County, and we were part of the participation in developing this updated program. But the question was, do all twenty-nine communities have to adopt this prior to it being effective for us to apply for funding? And the answer to that is no. Once we adopt it, we are then certified and we can make application if an event occurs. And I do want to extend my appreciation for the York County Emergency Management Authority. I think they are the best in the state of Maine, where they have incredible resources under their director, Cleaves. We've seen that throughout COVID and the implementation of the Vaccination Center here and the other programming that they've done in coordinating our local entities, and I just wanted to recognize them for their efforts.
Thank you, Steve. Any other questions by councilors or comments? And we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, by a show of hands? That is a unanimous vote. Thank you, Alex.
Thank you, everyone.
Twenty-two dash three, six, seven, dash, zero, one. Order to review and amend operational hours at the Sanford Transfer Station in response to ongoing labor shortages. I'm going to ask for you to, are you going to do this this evening, Steve?
We have Director Hill on.
Oh, Director Hill's here?
If he wasn't, I could.
Okay, I'm not going to, I'm going to wait for the explanation because I'm not sure what the motion is going to be, so. Director Hill?
Thank you. Yes, so we have been working internally with the deputy director, Pete Smith, to try to continue to staff the transfer station fully and get coverage out on the street for emergent calls for things like potholes or tree maintenance or other things like that, not including some of our routine, you know, annual maintenance work programs such as ditching, street sweeping, things like that. We are short-staffed. We're down seven right now. I know, I think it was mentioned earlier, five, but the number is seven. Most recently, we had a couple of good rounds of interviews today to try to fill those positions at the transfer station on a permanent basis. But as we continue on, we're just, we're not seeing the applications coming in, and we've got a limited number of staff. So the proposal is to change the hours of the transfer station to four nine-hour days, Tuesday through Friday, and then a four-hour day on the Saturday, for staff hours. So the open hours for the transfer station would be seven thirty to three, Tuesday through Friday, and then a seven thirty to eleven on Saturday.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
I feel strongly about this. So last time we changed these hours, I was firmly against it because I said, well, nobody goes to the transfer station pretty much after twelve, one o'clock on a Saturday, and still you extended them, saying that we should follow what Kenabunk does. So I firmly believe that if the transfer station is used till noon, we should keep it open till noon on Saturday. That is my only request. I think this, since I go to the transfer station multiple times during the week, since I go to the transfer station every single Saturday, unlike the people making this decision, I firmly believe that this should stay open till, at the minimum, noon on Saturday.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hurley. Are you going to move that, other than the other hours, that you would request that our motion include a Saturday closure that isn't at eleven, but is at noon?
Is at noon? I mean, there's, he can cut backs. I don't think it needs to stay open. I think he had it staying open till four during the week. I don't think that's necessary. I think he could cut back there and give us till noon on Saturday.
All right. Is that a motion that you're making?
Yes, do you want me to give specific hours that I came up with?
Sure.
Sure.
I think I need to have something to vote on because I agree with you.
So I don't know if he wants me to come to exactly forty hours, or if I can leave an hour of extra cleanup time or things that they can do at the transfer station longer than a half an hour. I would recommend seven thirty to three thirty, Tuesday through Friday, which, and then gives them time to clean afterwards. Seven thirty to noon on Saturday, and it gives an extra hour that they can use during the week if they go more than the half hour of cleanup after those hours.
So that is a motion?
That is a motion.
By Deputy Mayor Hurley? Is there a second? Counselor Termath?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Now further discussion. And I, Steve, I think that the deputy mayor and I actually discussed this with you, that we really felt that Saturday was an important day, that I can understand afternoon, things kind of die down, but I feel really strongly that it needs to stay open as well until noon. Counselor Termath?
Yeah, I definitely agree with staying open till noon on Saturday. You know, it's, especially kind of getting, you know, closer towards the fall, that's where a lot of people, you know, really like to dump the leaves, you know, when we get closer to fall time. I mean, not so much right now because of the fact that it's summer and everybody's busy. But I have a quick question, though, for you, Mr. Hill. Now, the data, how did you guys come up with the data showing the participation numbers, so to speak, on Saturday for folks utilizing the transfer station? How'd you come up with that data?
Previously, we reviewed, you know, camera footage of cars coming in and out of the transfer station on Saturday and counted the number of cars.
Okay, I appreciate that. And one quick follow-up as well. During the, during the work week, are you seeing right now, and now it's probably transitory too, correct, based on, based on season? So right now, in the summertime, you know, we're seeing a larger, larger volume, and then come fall, you know, are you seeing a dip or are you seeing an increase? So I'm just trying to put some context here.
Yeah, we don't have, like, numbers throughout the seasons as far as peaks and valleys and things like that. We are in the process of hiring new full-time personnel over there, and that actually was part of the interview discussion even today, of kind of doing head counts, both of the upper and the lower, to try to get a better sense on an ongoing basis, just what is our frequency, when is it better to have the gate open?
Thank you.
I just want to make sure everybody understands what the motion is that's on the table. That Tuesday and Friday would be seven thirty to three thirty, clean until four, and on seven thirty to twelve, clean until, to twelve thirty on Saturday.
And I know it doesn't give exactly the forty hours, but that gives a little bit of.
Wiggle time.
Wiggle time during the week, especially.
Okay, I mean, I think you understand where we're coming from.
If I could just add, could I just add that we do need to program in there, we would prefer to have a half hour cleanup at the end of each day.
I factored that into, I factored that into the calculation, and it still gives you an hour of wiggle room. You're at thirty-nine with those hours, and that factors in the half hour cleaning time.
I guess, and I just want to make sure that we advertise this because if people have gotten used to the transfer station being open on Saturday afternoon till three, which I always thought was kind of a waste anyway because not much goes on on Saturday afternoons around here.
Unless it's leaf season.
Unless it's leaf, right. But we could always adjust for that. So I'm just, I just want to make sure that we get this out there, like on the, you know, everywhere. Give it to Jordan and make sure that it's posted out there. Counselor Stackpole, you have your hand up?
I will say.
Oh, Counselor Martel had his hand up.
Martel was before me, yes. Counselor Martel was before me.
Go ahead, Counselor Martel. Thank you.
Yeah, I just had a question about whether this is planned to be permanent or whether this isn't just until you get some backfills in for the open positions and then we come back and revisit that.
So, you know, part of what the city manager is discussing is even, you know, hours change at the city hall level. We have a union contract that is now modified hours for the highway division and the garage division. The transfer station has operated independently according to the contract. So, you know, the only guarantee out there in life is there's going to be change. So, you know, the only guarantee out there in life is there's going to be change. So we will try to meet the public need as best we can, to say that there's not going to be any more change. I mean, that's, we can't guarantee that. We're going to, again, just try to do the job with the resources we've got available.
Thank you. Counselor Stackpole?
Yeah, I'd just like to hear from Director Hill if what's being proposed here by the council will work for you.
So, I'm sorry, what's the final?
I think we're at seven-thirty to three-thirty, Tuesday through Friday, and seven-thirty to noon on Saturday, and then there's some additional time in there that's available for cleanup.
I think the most important thing is if it works for the public who uses the transfer station.
Yeah. So I don't know if you're-
But also, too, is it will work for our operators and our schedules in order to get the work that we need to get done, done. I think seven-thirty to three-thirty, Tuesday through Friday, and what'd you say, seven-thirty to noon, or seven-thirty to twelve-thirty on Saturday?
No, you can do till noon, and then it gives you an extra hour any time during the week, where if they can't quite fit all the cleanup, and they have to maybe, maybe they could change out a bin before they head home, gives them a little bit of extra hour, extra time to do that whichever day they would want, but you could fiddle with that.
You know, help us get other things done, you know. There are requirements from Maine DDP on keeping the facility clean and things like that, that we could definitely use the time.
I know it's a lot eas-, Madam Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
I know it's a lot easier for them to do work once the gates are closed, so they might actually appreciate the extra time after the gates are closed.
Correct.
So Matt, I'm just going to take that as a yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hanselman?
I remember voting on these change in hours, so Maura, you can, I think you said pretty much, you told us so earlier.
I did.
But in that discussion, and I apologize, I can't remember what year it was now that we shifted this, there was discussion about tracking some data. When you said previously, we've looked at the data of our use of our transfer station through video, does that mean we haven't done it recently to help make this decision-making process, Matt? Or, I mean, do your staff agree that, you know, we're just not seeing traffic, as Deputy Mayor Hurley predicted, from that eleven-to-three window, and that's the big push for this shift?
What's before you tonight, and really, the reason for the proposal and the shift has less to do with the operation of the transfer station, and more to do with the operation on the highway side, you know, on any given weekday, given our commitments between working with our contractor down on the West Side Village, our contractor over the airport, we could have two to three people covering one-hundred-and-eighty-four miles of road, and that results in basically some untenable situations as far as getting routine work done, and also that preventative, well, the preventive, but also the ability to respond to emergencies. You know, having two people available on a highway crew for one-hundred-and-eighty-four miles for the entire city is just not something that we want to do on a routine basis. So it's, the, what's driving this discussion is that Highway Division response. It's not as much the transfer station, the people over the transfer station, even though they've been interim.
We lost you. Okay, I think we, I think we have enough information. Counselor Termath?
Yeah, I just want to clarify that this is permanent hour change, permanently, not temporary?
Like the other one was permanent.
Okay.
A couple of years ago.
We'd have to vote on it again.
Yeah, I'm just checking, just checking, because-
Right, that's why it's in front of us. So we are amending those, and it's in response to ongoing labor shortages. So if we were ever back at full staffing, and I would hope they would come back to us and discuss if we needed, and I hope that there's going to be some tracking of data in terms of how many people actually come in on a Saturday morning, and are there between eleven and twelve, and see if that is the busy time. Come back to us and tell it's not busy at all. Glad to hear it, but I kind of doubt it. So, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion necessary?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
You made the motion, yes, we're all set. So everybody understands what we're voting on. All those in favor? Show of hands? That is a unanimous vote. Twenty-two dash three-six-one dash zero-one. Ordered to review and discuss proposed amendments to Chapter two-eighty and one-forty-nine of the Sanford City Ordinances pertaining to mineral extraction, and to authorize that the amendments be sent to the Planning Board for review and a public hearing process. In this case, we're really just, well, actually, I'm going to let Steve present, and then we'll, hopefully, the motion will be as presented here.
Right, so I was asked to give an abbreviated presentation. Our Planning Director Beth Delavalle is with us this evening by Zoom. We have other members of the task force that are with us here this evening as well. So this completes seventeen meetings of the Mineral Extraction Task Force. Those meetings average two and a half to three hours each, so we had fifty-one hours in meeting time, or approximately two-hundred-and-twenty-five staff hours in this with the committee members. And then our Planning Director had an additional one-hundred-and-twenty-five hours of outside work, as far as meeting research, drafting, and revising. When we started into the process, the goal was to look at the city's current five-year permit application process, the difficulties that both the business sector and the Planning Board has, as far as taking that on each five years for the mineral extraction operations. So in starting the research on this, one tasked with coming up with a better system that's more acceptable by the industry, as well as for administration, being the Planning Board and the Planning Department, we did a review on nine towns and/or cities, and their varying approaches as far as regulations and standards, and how their ordinances dealt with gravel pits, mineral extraction elements. And from that, we quickly locked down on the City of Augusta as having had the most comprehensive, as well as applicable ordinance, that we could use as a starting template for our work. So that's where we started our work. Pursuant to that, we quickly came to a concurrence that the five-year permit was onerous, was not serving our community well, and sought to convert this to a site plan. So you would apply for a future site plan, you'd get your site plan in place, complete with your operations manual, and then from that point forward, you'd be under an annual licensing process, no different than any other business in the community that's subject to inspections. You'd have an annual license renewal. In pursuant to that, the trade-off that we were looking for was better enforceability, as far as that annual license is concerned, the annual inspection, bringing forward concerns. One of the things that was recognized in the development of the ordinance that you have in your packet here this evening was, many times, the minimal inspection process in that five-year period was not picking up on very egregious errors, i.e., excavating below the five-foot datum line, getting close to the groundwater table, and actually excavating into the groundwater table within some of these operations, for which there was not good resolve as far as fixing that, once those violations had occurred. So under the new guideline, under the new ordinance amendments for Chapter two-eighties, it's actually a completely new submission, the industry will no longer do the five-year permit, they'll apply for, they'll apply and seek and get a site plan through the Planning Board. There are new standards in here that was the topic of, most of the time, with the industry and the other representatives on there, some of which were from the Planning Board, was the examination of standards. One of the things the industry said to us straightforward was that we wanted better clarity as far as the standards. When I've had to deal with applicants in the past, where's that set in the city's ordinance? And when you couldn't put your finger on it, it was a difficult position to be in. I can guarantee you will not be in that position, should this pass as so proposed. The proposed amendments in Chapter two-eighty that you have in here also addresses the moratorium on the development of lagoons, lagoon activity, and/or the creation of ponds undertaken as part of mineral extraction, with new and clear standards. License fee is proposed, that's under Chapter one-forty-nine. We note that the industry is not accepting of the fee schedule as currently proposed. We recognize that needs to be adjusted. That is something, the amendments that are being proposed for the licensing, Chapter one-forty-nine, that will stay with the City Council and not go to the Planning Board. It'll go to them for their consideration for the comprehensive package, but when it comes to the setting of the standards, as far as the license and the fees associated with that, that will be with the City Council. So I'll work with the Council concurrently, should you push these forward tonight to address the fee schedule that's in Chapter one-forty-nine. Other elements that I think are pertinent to speak on, the second page of the memorandum written by Planning Director Beth Delavalle. She outlines all of the areas that have been addressed in here. I'm just going to hit on the highlights. Conditional use standards for excavation below the seasonal high-water table, so that's the lagooning. Standards have been set for that. That's outside of the mapped aquifers within the community, and there's also recognition in here that any new pits would also need to be outside of the mapped aquifers that serves the community's water. Wooden topsoil processing as a necessary use, this has been a huge topic in the past, has been addressed in this new draft ordinance. Reclamation enclosure plans, significant movement there, and as far as the funds that need to be put forward, as far as accounting for that to take place. Buffer areas and setbacks, significant improvements and mitigation as far as buffers are concerned, as it relates to public water sources, private wells, and/or future private wells, or future public water sources. Groundwater impacts were a huge topic of discussion. Those have been brought forward and put into this ordinance, both through setbacks, monitoring activities, and the limiting of certain activities that could be impactful to groundwater. One of the major elements that was recognized throughout this, the task force work, was that Sanford is somewhat unique. When we looked at other ordinances in other communities, that the majority of our mineral extraction is taking place currently on top of our significantly mapped aquifers. So when one of the industry representatives brought up, well, we excavate below groundwater in another community, when you look at that particular operation, it is not on a mapped aquifer, it's not a part of significant recharge. I can't thank Dave Parent from our Water District enough for his contributions in bringing the understanding to the entire task force of what it means to impact our aquifers as it pertains to mineral extraction, simply by reducing below that five-foot level what can happen with iron, magnesium, and other mineral content by eliminating that aeration zone. Again, as I referenced, the extractions below seasonal high-water table, and any penalties associated with that is addressed, and there's a whole host of other items in here. So based upon that very quick review, I know Beth could speak on this for hours, as could we all that were on the task force, I'm asking for recognition that the work product that is in the packet this evening is very much reflective of all of the contributions of the members of the task force, especially two extremely dedicated industry representatives that were on that committee. They have hours and hours and hours into this, and their input was very well listened to and heated, and I will compliment them on getting down into the nth degree of the detail on everything, on everything. So I sit here comfortable that we have gone through the details on this. I'm eager for the City Council to move this forward, pending this review, to the Planning Board, for, I know that they will immediately schedule a minimum of two workshops on this before they get to the full public hearing part, but the industry representatives will be part of that, starting on the first meeting forward, and they'll have more opportunity to, for the entire industry, not just the two industry reps that were on the committee, to lend input into this, as to any additions or deletions. And then I would expect the Planning Board would then bring those recommendations back to the City Council with the amended product, and hand that back to you with their recommendations for future passage.
Thank you. I think I'm just going to ask for a motion and a second. First, Counselor Stackpole?
Move we approve as presented.
And is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Martel? And there's a second by Counselor Martel, discussion by the Council. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
All I wanted to say is, since, I know this has been a difficult topic at the Planning Board level, and I'm glad we did this process, can we make sure that any, I don't know if the Planning Board is going to recommend changes, what's going to happen, but we have a clear, we can clearly see anything the Planning Board wants to change, if it comes out of there. Because I don't want to have to, I want to know, base document is the task force, and Planning Board, I want to see if they're making the changes. I'm assuming they won't, because you worked so hard on this, but again, this has been a heavy topic for them over the years, so it's possible.
Is that pretty clear? I think I know what she's, she's, like, we want to work from a document when we get it, that we don't have to figure out, like, look, we want it all in one document, what the Planning Board changed in the-
From the task force.
From the task force.
Easily done. It was getting a little difficult for us at the end, because we had first, second, third, fourth amendments in there, color coding, and it was getting a little extraneous.
I figured.
No, but for, you know, this draft ordinance can be put forward, you know, as a black-line copy, and then any amendments that the Planning Board makes to it will be the amendments that you'll see.
And just to be clear, so this is a permitting process and a licensing process, that are two different things.
Yes.
And the licensing will come back to the Council, we'll be working on that while the Planning Board is working on the permitting ordinance, to hopefully come to some agreement about what would be fair licensing fees.
Yes, and I can touch on that quickly. So not different than the marijuana industry. Those licenses are coming forward in rapid fashion and in high numbers. The annual inspections go, they go well, there's no non-compliance in that, and those fall under the consent agenda.
That's what you're anticipating?
That's what I'm anticipating here. For those in the industry that can meet the standards, meet their operations, they have the technical capacity to operate as their site plan and operations manual is set forward, the flip side of this, and the industry recognizes this, is this will take that five-year permit burden off of them, and the extreme cost of that. What they're looking for, though, is the annual inspection cost right now is not significantly less than what the five-year permit process would be, so we need to address that. To date, we have limited ideas on that, but the quotes we're getting from Wright Pierce, which is our only vendor to do these, for the light our surveys, and will be part of this inspection process, there is a first-year setup cost, which is substantially high, and then there's ongoing cost for the annual inspection thereafter. What we discussed at one of our last meetings, but we have not implemented in this, and that will be a one-forty-nine change, Chapter one-forty-nine change, is you could look at putting standards in there for the industry that shows that they have good technical capacity, they're operating pursuant to their own as menu, you could extend the inspection period, or reduce the number, and thereby reduce their overall cost as far as the inspections are concerned. One of the things that's built into this is, it's not an all-for-nothing. So if there's minor violations that are found in the annual inspection, you've got a fueling facility, and something is not quite right with that, well, then, okay, pause. You can't use your fueling operation until you correct that infraction, but the rest of your operation continues forward. Now, if you excavate three feet below your datum line for a large area of the pit, you're going to, it's going to shut down your whole operation. So we've set those points in there that the Council will look at and consider for the licensing renewal process, as to when and if, as such an egregious, that the license would be set aside, or it would be simply a notice of violation to address this, this, and this while you continue your operation. So we are looking for stricter enforcement, being a part of the licensing process. We also recognize that by having more stringent inspections on a more regular basis, you can pick up on these potential violations, and they can get addressed early at far less cost to the industry, because if they don't realize that they're digging below the datum line, and that's not brought to their attention, and they do that for years on end, which has been in occurrence, right, then it's very expensive to go back and try to resolve that. So all of this has been built in. I find that it's a good balance between a more regular inspection process and a reduction of the burden from the five-year permit, but coming with that is a more, a stronger reliance on enforcement.
Thank you, Steve. Becky, I'm Counselor Brink, sorry.
It's late.
I know, well-
Steve, who inspects this to determine if they're in violation, and do we have the manpower to actually achieve this?
Well, let's see, that's part of the issue. So part of the inspection process will be our, Jamie Cole, our lead code officer, in conjunction with, right now, we have a contract with Wright Pierce. They are the only firm that submitted a proposal to our request for these inspection services. So when- So when you look at what's encompassed in there, it's an extensive inspection. So they will actually set up datum points that they'll use a drone and they'll fly LiDAR. So when they fly LiDAR over that site, I mean, every fraction of an inch, you can see everything on that site. So it'll identify stockpiles and haul roads and, you know, open area elevations, all of that is done with the, in the LiDAR setting. Where the industry is pushing back is why is that so expensive? It's not actually the, the LiDAR flights, once, once the data points are set, that's the expensive part. It's then taking that back and producing the report that's in compliance with our ordinance, right? That's the expensive part, the analytical piece. So one of the industry reps says, oh, we, we can get that drone flight done now and it just tells me everything I need to know. Well, but it's what the city needs to know as well. So we're trying to find an inspection process that lends value to the operation itself by them not having to do that type of survey work and helping with their technical capacity for operations, but at the same time gives the licensing requirement that, that they're operating, they're not infracting, impacting upon the water tables, they're not impacting, polluting the water tables and, and slope violations and all of those elements.
Does that answer your question? Councilor Hanselman?
Thank you. I have two questions. One, do we expect that we'll be able to get this approved by the September deadline of the Laguniti moratorium? Thank you. Or?
It's actually August 28th, Sunday. We'll call a special meeting for you on Sunday. No. So Beth has reached out to our legal counsel, Attorney Sossier. He said we can extend the moratorium again as long as you, you show proof that the reason for the moratorium being put in place still exists and that you're making reasonable progress. So I think this is very reasonable progress because this does not say an absolute no to, to Laguniti, but it sets some very strict standards, which is reliant upon the DEP standards and DEP permitting, if you are going to do that. And then, then again, it's only outside of our mapped aquifers.
Thank you. And then my other question is, I know the task force has two great industry folks on it. Did the task force open up to public comment from other industry folks or will that happen at the planning level when it comes to public?
That will start at the planning board level.
Right, thank you.
One of the industry reps said, oh, I'm going to run this out to all of my peers. I said, well, be careful what you wish for, right? I, I sit here very comfortable that the industry was extremely well represented because the two industry reps not only operate significant operations in Sanford, but they do it in other communities. So it was invaluable, their, their experiential elements that were brought forward, well, in such in the community, they do it this way and over here they do it that way. Now I can do this here, but oh, okay, I understand why it's a concern here in Sanford. So all of those conversations are part of this work product that you, that you have here.
Any other questions from councillors? I just would really like to say thank you to the mineral, mineral extraction task force. I know that it was a lot of really long, a long process, but I think in the end, and it's not done, clearly, it's going to go to the planning board now. So it's just the, the next step in that process, but I feel like we at least accomplished something along the way. So I look forward to this coming back to the council again. And to, and I just want to make sure I understand that when it comes back to the council, it will have a public hearing at that point as well.
It will.
So there are multiple points along the way where the public will be able to weigh in.
First and second read at the council level, once it comes back from the planning board process. So I'm, I'm very comfortable that any industry representative that may not have had a voice in it yet has multiple, multiple, multiple opportunities to do so.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion on the, on the floor. All those in favor, by a show of hands, that is a unanimous vote.
Next.
Twenty-two dash three six nine dash zero one, order to review and approve a consent agreement between Rock Bottom Sand and Gravel LLC and the city of Sanford. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
I'll make a motion to approve a consent agreement.
Is there anyone else who'd like to make a second? Councilor Hanselman?
Second.
Okay, I'm going to let, this is directly relating to this process that we're going through. If you read it, you probably understood that. So Steve, just go ahead for the general public, explain what we're doing.
So the, the administrative consent agreement has been prepared by our legal counsel in conjunction with our planning director, Beth Dela Valley. This is in direct response to being, you know, sensitive to the industry. Rock Bottom Sand and Gravel did not submit timely for their five-year permit. They didn't get that information in time. Their, their permit has actually lapsed. What is being accounted for in the consent agreement is that they would continue to be allowed to operate, provided that the notice of conditions that they're in violation of would be addressed, I believe by September of next year. I may get that date wrong. But there's, there's a timeline for them to address the conditions that are outstanding as far as violations on their pre-existing pit. But what is also being asked for and being documented in this consent decree is that they are going to start working on their new site plan, but under the new standards that's being proposed under the new ordinance. So otherwise, they would have to go through a large process and an expensive process to get their new five-year permit. And then the next time that comes up, they'd have to go through a site plan yet again under the new ordinance. So it is not business friendly to put them through that time and expense when they and their consultant recognize we'll just, we'll just go forward under the new ordinance. They would be one of our first to get that site plan in place and be operating under the new ordinance should they carry through with that process.
Thank you, Steve. Questions by, by the council, Councilor Brink?
So do we have to reword the bottom part of under background information? Because it was a little confusing. It said, you know, for the, to complete the 2017 permit up to two months after the city adopts the zoning and license provision. Is that what we just voted on, but where, it's not done yet?
It's not done yet. No, so this, this is accurate. So under the consent agreement, we don't know yet when you'll be finished with the adoption of the new ordinance. But once you are complete with that, they have an additional two months to make application under that.
And, but what is the June 7th, 2023 date? What is that all about?
That is the date for them to address the current violations under their five-year permit.
Okay. All right.
So there's two conditions there. They'll, they'll have, they'll have an extended period of time to make the application to the new process, but they still can't forego fixing the violations that they have currently.
Everybody understand that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Becky. Councilor Brink? So we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, by a show of hands, that is a unanimous vote. It is nine o'clock. We are doing very well. Twenty-two dash three two eight dash zero one, order to discuss recommended amendments to the Sanford City Charter pursuant to a review by the Sanford Charter Review Committee and take under advisement to move or not move forward for a referendum vote in November 2022. I, I think what I'd like to do is just have a motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Motion to discuss.
Is there a second? Councilor Hanselman?
Second.
Okay, I don't anticipate that this evening, I mean, we may move individual things forward, but the way I'm, I'm looking at this is I've asked the city manager to just review for us and for the public what our options are as a council in terms of, of looking at these recommended amendments to the Sanford City Charter. After we do that, we will go through them. And I think what we'll see is there's probably, in the same way that the Charter Review Committee had a few that tended to have a lot more discussion, that we will take those under advisement as well. We will see this again on the agenda, probably at the first meeting in August, and I'm hoping that we can wrap up what we want to have going forward. But I'm going to let, if you want to discuss, Steve, I just want you to review again, A, we can do nothing, what we can do and, and how these would appear on the ballot, should we decide to send anything forward.
Right, so pursuant to the city charter, the city council appointed the ten-year, ten-year review committee. Ten-year review committee wrapped up their work. David Parent was on that committee as well. We put you on everything, Dave. Rail trails, minerals, you know? Yeah, thank you. So they completed that process. They presented their work product to the city council. It was relatively extensive, but all of the, the work that they did, as recognized by the city's attorney, was proposed amendments. In other words, it's housekeeping. There is no revisions proposed here. A revision would be a change to the governmental structure and/or the balance of power. There's nothing as far as the amendments that are in here in any way, shape and fashion meet that definition of a revision. They were all reviewed by our legal counsel and viewed as amendments. That being said, the city council has fulfilled the charter review process. You've received the recommendations from the charter committee. At this junction, juncture in time, you as a city council have three elements. You can accept all of these proposed amendments as presented and move those forward for referendum vote in November. You can accept, you can reject some and amend some and put those that changed elements forward, or you can accept none of these and put forward your own amendments.
Thank you. Okay, so my suggestion is, and I, everybody can choose what they want to look at as we're doing this. I am prefer, I am looking at the Burstein Schur review from our, our attorney, Phil Sossier, because I think he is very, offers on the second page. First of all, in the first page, he basically says that there's nothing that they're proposing that qualifies as a revision. They all qualify as amendments. Some would have to be together, they can stand alone. If, if they're alone on there, we could, you have to remember some of these things, if we split, as they're split up, something could pass and then something else that's supposed to go with that could not pass and that could mess up the whole thing. So I'm going to suggest this evening that we take on that second page. First, I will look at the first bullet point, which is elimination of voter approval of municipal budget, which if you'll see, there are sections 102 for 2.10, 6.18 and Article 7. It's because of the nature of the way that that was originally written, it appears in a lot of different places. I am personally satisfied that the, that the charter is clear, that we don't vote on the municipal budget because of, of the process that we've already been through and that I do not feel a need to put this in all of those pieces on this, on the ballot. I, I am not, I would personally not recommend that we, that we do that.
The deletions are unnecessary, is what it means.
Yeah, all of those deletions, they just, they don't make sense. And somebody might think that then instead, well, if I vote against this, it means that then we'll get to vote on the budget again. That will not be true. There's nothing in here that we're doing that will say that. It'll just mess things up because right now it's pretty darn clear that we used to vote on the municipal budget. We don't because of the process that was followed and that now, and that was designed by the people that wrote that section of the charter back in.
Ten years ago.
Ten years ago. Two thousand, the one we passed in 2012, correct. So I understand what the, I think I understand what the, the Charter Review Committee was trying to do to try to clarify, clarify things. I think they just, in, in, in essence, if we did what they're suggesting, I think it would just confuse things further. I would love to hear what the members of, Councilor Stackpole, you were on the committee.
Right, and this was, this was an item that was discussed a great deal at the, the budget committee. First of all, I'm in favor of, as it was written, that we don't put a public vote back in for the city budget. And, and just historically, for tho, for those people who want to understand the history here, 10 years ago, we, we put in to the, to the budget, not review, but.
Amendment?
No, what, what did we do?
Commission?
Commission, the, the commission, when we could actually change things around. That's when we proposed incorporating as a city, et cetera, et cetera. We put in a process where because this is done for the schools, okay, there is a, on their vote, there is a threshold of voters that need to vote on the school budget. This is by state law. They were required to do that. We, in fairness, built the same proposal where there was a threshold of votes that needed to be met in order for the city side to be approved. But we also put a sunset clause in there. And the sunset was if the citizens didn't come out and vote, because these are expensive, it's expensive to vote, et cetera. If the public didn't come out and vote, if they didn't meet that threshold after, I can't remember how many years, help me out more.
Five years.
Three years, five years?
Five, five years.
Five years, that we would eliminate the public vote on the city side. It's up to school, up to the school department. There's a process which they can.
No, actually there isn't.
There isn't anymore, okay.
Nope, state law says they will, the only process is by state law, every three years they get to vote on whether or not.
Okay, I thought if, well, whatever. That, that's a whole other kettle of fish over there. So did not meet the threshold and by charter, the public vote was dropped on the budget. It was brought up that we should put the public vote back in or re-up the same process where we would vote a certain number of, of votes. The threshold needed to be met for five years again here. And again, that was the topic of a lot of discussion. Ultimately, and I think the city manager spoke to this very well, moving to a city form of government, we've also moved to a representative form of government. And also Deputy Mayor Hurley said, you know, people don't feel represented. You know, what the heck am I doing as a city councillor? And I would echo that statement, that I'm here representing the taxpayers, as are all the city councillors. So I see this vote as not necessary and, and, and we need to trust in the representatives that we vote for to make sure the taxpayers get the best bang for their dollar and.
Councilor Stackpole, can I just ask one question?
Sure.
Because what they recommended as the charter review was not that they were going to reinstitute back a vote, but they were trying to clean up all of this, this verbiage that in my mind doesn't need to be cleaned up because it's pretty clear already that we don't have a vote.
All right.
So I guess, I'm, and I think it's confusing.
You got a good history lesson anyways.
I did, I did.
But I understand what you're saying.
Okay, so I guess I would just like to, all right, go ahead Deputy Mayor.
I'm just going to say that in, in part of the process, I think one of the things, and I, and I understand, because I'm a little bit like this, I think Steve was like, let's clean up this language, let's clean up this language. And we discussed every little bit and I agree with you, I think it's safer just to leave it in there. It's clear that it was sunsetted with that language and there's no reason to take it out.
And I can, I just add one other thing. I think it's also good historically because 10 years from now, a different group of people could be sitting here and they can look and say, oh, that's what they used to do. And now we understand what happened and why it's not in there anymore. So I, I guess, I think that it's part of the history of the document that I'm not really willing to, to, to get rid of. I like the way it appears. Councilor Turmath?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you to Councilor Stackpole, very eloquent on his comments. Appreciate that. The only thing I would say, you know, just commenting real fast on this, is that there are constituents out there in our community that, that feel that we should, you know, like you said, that we should have, have a say. The citizenry needs to have a say on what happens because they're stakeholders, they pay taxes, so on and so forth. And, you know, an up and down vote, you know, when it comes to the municipal budget, you know, besides the school, the school budget. So, so, you know, it's, it's a, it's a tough one, right? It's a tough one because, you know, people feel like, hey, you know what, I got this budget passed, I didn't vote for it and now my taxes are going up like 10%, you know, just as an example. So, so I think we need to put the language in there, make it clear and, and communicate that back to the citizenry.
But do you understand what the language is that the recommendation was?
Yes.
Not to put the language in there?
Yes, but I, and that's, and that's the, and that's. Yes, but I, and that's, and that's the, and that's...
So, you're suggesting that you're, if I were to move, to leave the language in the current Charter the way it is, and not move this recommendation forward, you would vote against that motion?
With the current language right now, having it sunsetted...
It's already sunset.
It's already sunsetted, so, so I would move to make a motion to amend...
Are you, can you just wait on any motions, please?
Okay.
I mean, I understand, I just was trying, I asked you what you would...
Finish your thought.
I, I just, that's why I'm asking you what, about my, so in other words, you're not, you don't even agree with what the Charter Committee recommended?
What I agree with is the fact that there's a lot of, there's a lot of citizens out there that feel that they should have a say in the matter, and that's what I'm saying. So...
So, that's not...
No, I understand, I understand, but, like, we're getting in the weeds here.
Actually...
This is later discussion.
That's, that's...
Absolutely.
Yeah, that can, you know what, I'm just looking at the recommendations that came from them, we can move them forward, when we get to the point where if we want to make others, make further recommendations, we can see if that passes or not, but we will, I'm just asking specifically, right now, we are discussing the cleaning up of the language that...
Cleaning up of the sunset language.
Of the sunset language. Councilor Martel?
Thank you. I was just looking at the red lines down below, or yellow lines, I guess I should say.
Can you tell us exactly what you're looking at?
So, for the sections 102, 402, 10, 618, and it doesn't, it looks like they're just changing a few words here and there. Am I missing something? Because it seems like it's pretty, pretty minor changes that may or may not really be necessary.
Okay, so...
All right, the Deputy Mayor explains.
So, let me try to explain how this process has to work. So, they made a bunch of recommendations that goes throughout the document. We have to group it in questions, unless we're going to ask about every little change, we group it in questions that are alike, okay? And so, this particular question is, hey, let's clean up the document since the sunset's already done, and let's take out all that sunset language that they threw in, because it's not necessary anymore. So, yes, it seems like minor changes, but it's completely unnecessary. So, why put a question before the public that is going to potentially be confusing? It's a cleanup language we don't need to clean up. And so, for this section, where it specifically deals with the sunsetting of the vote on the municipal budget, and the sections that it's in, what we're saying is, why throw that question on the ballot when it's not a necessary change? Because it just becomes confusing, you know, people might think that they're voting for the vote to come back when it's not what's happening, it's just cleaning up language. Yeah.
I don't see it.
Yeah. I don't think it is, and that's, that's what they're, that's what the attorney's saying as well, is that it looks like it could stay in. So, that's what we're trying to say, is kind of go, okay, this section includes all of this, do we want to put this before the public? Is it necessary to put it before the public? And that's, and then, when we get to what Councilor Turmath was talking about, if there's other questions that weren't recommended by the Charter Committee, we can discuss those separately.
Right, and I would anticipate that those will come when we've gone through these recommendations first, and when we finish these, then we can then go to the other. And I don't anticipate that we will finish that this night, but I'd like to at least accomplish going through some of them. So, am I hearing from anyone that they would agree with not moving forward this particular, the elimination of voter approval, basically, language from the municipal budget? Is there any, because I would be moving to not move that one forward.
I would agree with that.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second, all right, so I'll make the motion to not move that one forward, second by Councilor Martel. Any other discussion? All those in favor of not moving that forward? Is that a unanimous vote?
Yes.
Thank you, so that was unanimous. So, that recommendation, Steve, not going forward. Okay, I'm going to skip the second one, because I think that is going to be the one that's going to be the biggest thing of discussion, the biggest, it's going to take a lot more of our time. So, City Managers' Appointment Authority, Sections 402.3 and 801. The language that was presented says works fine as proposed, while 30A MRS, Section 25265, anticipates that the municipal officer shall appoint the assessor. That requirements in that statute apply unless otherwise provided by Charter, and the City Council has the authority to approve any appointment. So, basically, I, what I understood that to say is, we don't have to do this, and it's because it's covered under state law, but if we want to be specific so that everyone understands it, we can include assessor in there, correct, Steve?
Correct, so, it was viewed that, no different than other department managers that are coming under that same type of significant status, that the administration, the City Managers' Office, would go through that gleaming, that interview process, to get the most qualified individual responsible, and then bring that forward for council approval, thereby, the council would appoint after going through that process. So, it's recognized for a whole host of department positions in the City Charter, for whatever reason, there was a wrong reference as far as the assessor was concerned by article, and it was left out of that list. So, the committee felt that it should be added to that list. It, state law does say that the assessor will be appointed, or someone to 30A, but it was left out of the Charter.
Right, and that, and I think that that discussion was probably because somebody, the attorney might have said, it's already addressed in state law, you don't need to put it in there. But I think that it does clarify it.
I do, I do too, it seems like a glaring omission that the assessor's not there.
So, I, unless, I will move to move this recommendation forward to the voters. Is there a second? Councilor Brink?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? All right, that is unanimous. So, we have one no and one yes. Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to do the planning board. This amendment, this is Section 903.3, this amendment would change the number of votes to a proven action from a majority of those present to a minimum of four votes, which, to be fair, I actually thought was exactly what it should be, because to me, that is a majority of the total.
It's the same with us, right?
Right. This is fine as proposed, but would likely require a separate question on the ballot as it's not related to any of the above subjects. I do not have a problem with putting this on as a separate, because I think it's easy to understand. I don't think it's confusing, I think it would say, yes, who wouldn't want to have, if there's so many members, you need to have a majority, it's not a majority of those present, it's a majority of the total.
I'm surprised it doesn't say, because it says it for the City Council.
Yeah, that was just one of those things that went by the board. So, I will make the motion to move the Planning Board Amendment about the number of votes forward as presented by the Charter Commission. Is there a second? Second by Councilor Brink. And I'm, I'll be honest, I'm just moving these forward in the interest of getting us through, because I'm hoping that I will get a vote to continue at least till 10 o'clock if we need to, to get through some of this stuff, so we'll see. Okay, so, all those in favor, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor of moving that one forward, that is unanimous. Okay, definitions. Article, what is that, Article 114? Boy, do you know how long it's been since I've used Roman numerals?
You know, I read Roman numerals pretty easily.
I used to read them really, you know, but I don't see them as much anymore, so it gets harder. It's like it's Super Bowl time, right? I think that's the only time most Americans see Roman numerals anymore. Okay, so the, these are all of the definitions, and these will all be in one, grouped in one. How will they be explained, Steve? Can you explain that one to me?
Well, I believe the amendments will show on the ballot that it's going to show the definitions themselves. So, this was brought forward, it was actually as the Charter Review Committee was named, because of some of the ambiguity of these definitions, we had, we had to put a legal request out there to see if that member could serve or not, and the answer was yes. So, all of these definitions that are, that are in here, that were not in the Charter before, were specifically put in here, in reading through the Charter, so we would put the definition in, read the Charter, yep, it applies everywhere, if not, tweak it to make it fit everything, so that there was clarity for, you know, city office, municipal officer, municipal officers, being the legislative body, and getting those definitions in, that, you know, a good attorney knows what these mean, but we have these interpretation-type issues, so it's simply matters of clarification.
Thank you. So, any, what I will do is, I'm going to move that we move all of the definitions and propose changes forward as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Brink. Discussion by the council. Anybody have an issue with that?
No.
I mean, I thought they were pretty clear, something that's needed, just more to read for future people. All right, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Okay, so now we disposed of, all right, let's do the bonding authority. Okay, this is, maybe take a little bit more time, but I think it's worth doing. Bonding authority, Sections 609.2, 705.1, and 705.2. Can you review those for us, Steve?
Yes, let me get to the relevant section here again, just in the legal opinion.
I know, I've got to find my page.
So, under Section 619.2, this is for an emergency appropriation, the council currently has the authority to bond up to $250,000. This was discussed at length at the committee, and they, they saw that the $250,000 10 years ago was worth a sum of money, that a million dollars today is more appropriate as far as being able to, the council, under an emergency appropriation, actually be able to borrow money for those type of situations to move, move emergency response forward. So, it's simply updating what the dollar is worth today from 250,000 to 1 million dollars.
Okay, so, 619, it's 619.2, because Phil had it 609.2, and 705...
619.2.
And then 705...
So, just, you know, just as a...
I want to make sure I understand what we're doing in all of those other ones, just for everybody at home.
Just as a quick aside while you're looking that up, we, we were speaking with Westbrook, Westbrook has authority for all bonding with no limits.
Oh, I know, all of it. Can you imagine?
They don't, they don't go to vote for any of it, so, we're recon, we recognize that people want to be able to vote for the larger items, and I think it's a good idea to vote for the larger items. But yeah, it's interesting, the different charters you have throughout the state.
So, under Section 05, this is for non-emergency bonding situations. So, right now, you could put forward a municipal budget that would have borrowing of up to $250,000 as part of that municipal budget, absent any dollar, given the occurrence of a dollar amount larger than that, it has to go to voter referendum.
So, basically...
Would increase it from 250 to 1 million dollars.
So, basically, everything is going up from the 250,000, any time, any, so...
Makes sense.
Which makes total sense, okay.
Well, we consider inflation from 2002 to now.
I know. I know, okay, so, I will move the bonding authority, Sections 619.2, 705.1, and 705.2, as proposed by the Charter Committee forward. Second by Councilor Brink?
Yep.
Second by Councilor Brink. Any discussion? Councilor Hanselman?
Just really briefly, Steve, can you remind us what falls into the definition of emergency? A couple examples, just so folks understand that.
Yeah, not off the top of my head. We went through that at length as far as the Charter Review Committee, we had to keep going back and looking at that definition, but it does list examples in the Charter.
Like natural disasters, we had a hurricane, and roads were, infrastructure was damaged.
It's the unanticipated events, it's not part of your normal course of action or your normally anticipated budgetary process.
But there's also, I mean, this, this is upping the amount, though, in other sections for other things that we would be able to...
What's the capital and the emergency only?
Yeah, it's just those two bonding areas. One is an emergency and one is a non-emergency.
Yep, that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All those in favor? Okay, we're going to move that one forward. So, let me just make sure I under, that we understand, so we're going to move those ones forward. If, for example, it doesn't pass, that we are allowed to increase our, the amount of money that we could bond, it just stays the way it is, doesn't change what's in the current Charter, has to go through this process. So, the only one now that we haven't addressed is the change in composition of the Budget Committee, correct?
That's right.
All right, it is almost 9:30. I would request that I have a motion to continue till 10 o'clock.
I'll make a motion to continue until 10 o'clock.
Is there a second? Second by Councilor Brink. I will remind you that with, absent a unanimous vote, we won't be able to continue, and therefore we won't have anything else, we won't do any of the council member comments or future agenda items either, and we will work until it's 9:30. So, all those in favor of continuing till 10 o'clock? Seven and, six, five, six in favor, opposed? One opposed, so we won't be finishing tonight. I'm going to ask the council if they think that we can finish this change in, Steve, do I need to call a special meeting to do the Budget Committee thing? If we have this on at the first meeting in August, and we can finish it at that meeting, will we be able to?
You'll meet your timeline.
Okay.
It has to be printed by September 8th, so you can carry that through to the first meeting of September, if need be, that would be very tight. As long as we had everything reasonably as, as it would be expected to be passed that night, I can't remember what the last meeting, the first meeting in September is.
Thank you. Okay, we're almost, I just would like, I'm not trying to, I just would like to say one other thing, I'm just informing the council that I'm asking next, at our next meeting, we will have on the agenda to consider a rule of procedure change, that our meetings will go till 10 o'clock, because I'm not going to do this, we need, we are here to do the people's work, I am, we'll have to have only a majority to go past 9:30, or we're going to change it to go to 10 o'clock. So, I will let you all decide what you want to do, I don't like being held hostage to one person who doesn't want to finish our work, I feel we're not doing the people's work when we do that. Councilor Stackpole?
Just briefly on that point, and I'll just say it was my idea to go to 9:30, I did say at that time, let's try it, see if it worked, we can determine whether it's working or not for us, so I would support looking at that again. I just want to say, if people are concerned about this whole budget process, all the meetings are online, you can listen to the discussions, particularly around the public vote, and around the composition of the Budget Committee, go back and listen to those and other things, although most of the other things are mainly housekeeping. Also, keep in mind that, and I believe I attended all the meetings, there was one member of the public that attended, I'll give him credit, say he attended all, but I don't think he started until we were a couple of meetings in, but anyways, there was one member of the public, there was nobody on Zoom, okay? So, when you, when you think about public engagement on a lot of these things, the evidence just isn't there, that there's that, that desire, so that's all I have to say.
Well, it's actually only 9:28 and a half, so I'm going to use that extra minute to just ask people to please review that portion, because we will discuss it, and I'm not sure what else is going to be on the agenda, but I do know that, as I said, that rule of procedure will be on the agenda, so do your backup if there's something that you intend to propose as something that you'd like to see as a Charter Amendment that would qualify as an amendment, you can put that forward, it'll be an up or down vote by the council, whether we move it forward or not. We already, and I would appreciate, Steve, at that meeting, if we can have the list of ones of what we've already approved as they might appear on the ballot, the ones that we've already moved forward. Okay, I am going to declare us adjourned. Thank you. Good night.